She's gonna hide the back, but. Do I have to?
The open meetings act is posted on the wall. Roll call.
Buckminster Ferguson.
Here.
Four Acre.
Here.
Castor. Kill, Brent Killingsworth.
Here.
Kenny Killingsworth. Layden.
Yep.
Reese. We have a form.
Wedge.
Blackwood, Michigan, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have a mayor's report, city manager's report.
Um, we've got a big agenda, so I'll just kinda go through. Uh, downtown electric project lots is onsite, um, as of today, so they moved back in. We'll start kicking that back off. Uh, we'll start up behind, um, SNC and F and M Bank. And work on that west alley and then east alley is probably later this year or early next year. We'll see how far they get along. They said they got twelve eighteen months worth yet. So it's gonna be some, some time. Alley's they're on right now are some of the worst ones to get into. There's a lot of, lot of utilities in that spot with all the fiber coming in, in SNC, so. That's all I got.
Chief, okay. Move on to regular business, discussion and action, agenda approval. Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Kenny wasn't here.
No, Joe was on.
Someone else is on. There we go. Six yeas.
Two, discussion and action, minutes approval for May fifth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
Discussion and action, claims approval for May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Alright, I wrote a report, oh, excuse me, sorry. Claims report was provided, uh, council and the packets, we had updated a few to add in the outgoing expenses for CRA, the mutual finance organization, and then our, um, city cards. Are in there, so they were added into the claims.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
By a public hearing, consideration of lots, one A.
Treasure report.
Number four.
I wanna see if that works.
Discussion and action, treasures report for April twenty twenty five.
Alright, so I put a report in there, so showing current bank account segments are seventeen million eight hundred ninety-four dollars, or eight hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred fifty-three and seventy-three cents. We don't have the full report pulled together just due to timing to get that done. So I'm asking council to table that to the next meeting.
Motion to table the next council meeting.
Second.
All vote.
I would like, uh, on the next one here, can we move fifteen to five, five to fifteen? Can I make a motion on that?
Yeah, we have to do that with the agenda meeting.
Yeah.
We have to do that up here.
Oh, do you? Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, we're on the.
Vote for Friday.
Six yeas.
And we'll have a public hearing, consideration of lot one A, a replat lot one, Helena subdivision.
Alright, uh, Doug or Bitchy wanna speak on behalf of Helena?
Uh, I guess, I would just, uh, request, uh, council to prove the subdivision. I mean, it's a project that Helena's trying to put together so they expand their, uh, operation, so. It's been approved by the planning and zoning, so I would ask council to prove the subdivision also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We're in hearing right now. Oh, sorry.
Any more public comment? Now we'll close the hearing.
Any questions you need answered standing first?
What's that?
Any questions you need answered? We can, well, we can.
Everything we can take up, just discuss that the next one.
Bring it right back up. Close this thing here.
Yeah, we're closed. Oh, we did take a motion on it, right?
We have a motion, close it.
Make a motion.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
Six, discussion and action, consideration of lot one A, a replat of lot one, Helena subdivision.
Alright, within your guys' packets, a planning and zoning application. Like Doug had mentioned before, the planning and zoning or planning commission had already went through this. Um, Helena has a current lot down there, uh, with easements and everything else that could get, get done through administrative replats. So these goes through full, full public hearing for our subdivision ordinance. They provided the application, uh, paid the fees and submitted the survey. Everything meets our subdivision requirements and the planning commission approved without any additional conditions.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
And, uh, another public hearing, consideration of the conditional use permit for storage of agricultural chemicals, storage of fertilizer, locating anidrous ammonia storage tanks and small tanks on lot one A.
Alright, so now that they have a subdivision, they're able to apply for the conditional permits. So rather than doing it at a separate time and timeliness of it, we just have it kinda tied in together, coming in right after. Essentially, it's the exact same operations that Helena is operating now. They currently have a conditional permit on the lot one, which will essentially die with that lot one, cause it'll no longer exist. And this will just move that same purpose to this new lot one A. Any questions?
Questions, other comment? Motion to close the hearing.
So, second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
Eight, discussion and action, consideration of the conditional use permit for storage of agricultural, uh, chemicals, storage of fertilizer, locate anidrous ammonia storage tanks and small tanks on lot one A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
Discussion and action, authorize the annual funding commitment for the Fall City Recreation totaling five thousand dollars for the youth recreation programs involved in maintenance, Fall City Rec.
You guys all have my request in there, it's Fall City Direct treasure. Um, a little, I did include a little informational thing, just so you guys can all see, and I invite the public to read it as well, uh, what Fall City Direct does for the community, um, outside the, outside of city funding too. Um, and then Briar has a little, uh, note in there as well, so, um, I will abstain from this vote to sign the treasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Five yeas, one abstention.
Discussion and action, resolution to enter into a listing agreement with Miller Law &amp; Roe Company Inc. For the sale of city-owned property located in sixteen twelve Fulton Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Who is my motion now?
Layden.
Layden. Six yeas.
Eleven, discussion and action, authorize approval of a recognition number R-E-Q zero one one zero one totaling ninety-seven thousand two hundred ten dollars for a standby generator at the wastewater lift station as recommended by the Board of Public Works, Trevor Campbell.
Alright, I submitted a reports, um, we have the force main, the sewer force main project, which is kicking off here shortly. That had an EPA grants, which was, got their community direct spending, so a little, a little over four hundred sixty-two thousand that was awarded for that. And then we had a cost share of a little over a hundred fifteen thousand for that, so that was put into sewer budget this year. We were able to access a waiver of the cost share, um, agreement or this cost share requirement due to our, our load and modern income index, uh, components here, uh, which was good for us. We just got it, or just got awarded that, that cost share waiver, so that freed up that hundred fifteen thousand dollars that was in the budget. So the wastewater team, Doug, wanted to put through, see if he can get the generator installed out there. It'd be as separate from that grant, cause that grant's an EPA grant, it's gotta go through the whole process and work plan, so that's already finalized. This would be our out-of-pocket components, uh, to get that done. We do have title one twenty-three requirements out there for emergency events currently are what we signify. It says that you have a generator onsite, you either have a portable one that can handle, that's responsive within an hour, um, or at least twenty-four hours of storage within the sewer system itself. It's kinda, we've been operating under that directive. That doesn't help us if it is forty-eight hours or something extended beyond that, so typically that lift station, if, if there's an outage, needs to be, needs to be pumped, uh, if it's extended for any period of time, so this give us a little redundancy at that site. All of our other critical components that we have are, have onsite, you know, diesel generators, the water plant, the wastewater plants, um, here at city hall. So they got a couple quotes from Nebraska Generator Service and then Power Generation. Nebraska Generator Service does all of our current, uh, work on all of our maintenance agreements, uh, for, for the generators. And they provided a turnkey quote, essentially the only thing that Fall City has to do is unload the generator from the truck and set it on, on the foundation. Power Generation just provides the generator itself and would need to go bid out the rest of those components, so. Foundation design, all those pieces that would go along with it would need to be another solicitation, so. Uh, we're probably worse entertainments and ideally the turnkey would be the way to go, um, in the long run, probably be the best value. Uh, and it's for the people that would be doing their service work likely anyways.
How is our water plant budget this year?
This is wastewater.
This is wastewater, so this, the hundred fifteen was budgeted to be out-of-pocket for capital expense for just that project. And we still have our other lining project that's within that also. So they have some maintenance, uh, pieces that were a little extra, some blowers and stuff like that, that we did come down with the plans. But all in all, it's, it's, we'll stay under, and this is only ninety, that leaves some dollars on the table yet. Ninety-seven thousand two hundred ten is this, and you got a hundred fifteen five sixty just for that project budgeted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Six yeas.
We want to throw discussion and action, order of purchase of a one-ton truck for the gas department as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Alright, can we take it, Doug?
Go for it.
Uh, we wrote a report up for this also. Uh, typically we've purchased most of our vehicles on just tagging on to the state bid requirements, which is what we initially did with, with this first go-around. We went to Armbristers and to, um, Holman's, they provided some quotes for honoring the state bid requirements for the trucks. And then Armbristers submitted an extra one that I guess was a unsolicited bid, cause it wouldn't meet the bid requirements. Uh, but they figured they could get a little bit lower, so we took that stuff to Board of Public Works, they decided to send it back out and just go out, resolicit the, the whole thing, uh, which we did, and came back with, uh, some bids for locals, and that opened it up for beyond locals. So we have one out, out of, out of the, out of town or out of non-local dealer submit, so. Armbristers Motor had a bid one for forty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-six for a Ram thirty-five hundreds. Uh, an additional alternate configuration, uh, with some power mirrors and some components for forty-eight thousand nine eighty-seven.
So what, what was the difference in those? Cause I was wondering my question, cause I tried to flip back and forth.
Yeah, it's just the tradesman package, the levels between their, their packages.
Yeah, I know, too.
Not, not a whole lot of, not a whole lot of, just an alternate configuration for accessories.
Give page two to that one, please.
Is there a truck out of commission to?
Yeah, this truck was budgeted, uh, to be replaced this year, there's a, I don't remember what year it is, uh, old Subaru, that was a lease truck that's sort of all flat out and knocking, so they've been wanting to get that replaced. Last year they did their, replaced their nineteen seventy-two, um, uh, service truck, I guess is what it was. So they have this one for this year. So they had budgeted seventy-five thousand, cause they'll have, uh, beds and different components to go on this also. So Mark Ramsey went through the beds, he's good with either of the locals, uh, he's good with the lowest responsible, which is that forty-seven four thirty-six from Armbristers.
I, I did question, I said something, Mark, about the state bid, that I didn't know exactly what was, but I think we, we're saving quite a bit of money here by going off the state bid too, aren't we? I mean, not a lot, two or three thousand bucks, aren't we?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be about, I think Dennis's was the lowest state bid, and I think he has the same, his state bid price is the same price as he has right here, so. Your difference of fifty-one, five seventy-two to forty-seven four thirty-six, so, you know, four, about four thousand.
They're just putting the bed on and stuff, the new beds. Who will be doing that?
Uh, they'll get, they'll get quotes for them. With reading or American, that's how they have done the past ones.
I mean, I guess if there's no difference between the two Armbrister bids for like a safety component or, or beefed up, you know, rear end or something like that, then I think we just go cheaper would be.
Yeah, yeah, Mark's, like I said, Mark's good with that one, um, no issues of what it was, they just submitted that extra one with additional, with the powerful mirrors and few different pieces.
And all of that motion to approve of that little bit.
Second.
All vote.
Six yeas.
We want a thirteen, discussion and action, authorize the execution of a payment and maintenance beautification proposal totaling thirty-four nine eighty-three as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
You wanna come up and talk Trevor on that?
So we took this to the board, I think it was in late December. It's, company's called Payback LLC, this is a, yeah, sole source, um, award to Payback LLC for doing a, a conditioner on some trial areas. You guys may have seen, or maybe when you leave tonight, look at, uh, the exit of city hall out here at the, the apron on the left side. There's a dark spot that's painted on there, that's this product, and it was applied probably about a year, probably a year ago now, I'd say, or probably things similar. But anyway, uh, this guy got permission to start selling this product, which historically hadn't been put to street application necessarily, but had been used historically on, on airport runways to prolong the longevity of, of asphalt runways. And it's got a proven track record, um, it is a basic, let's try and be scripted with it. It kinda goes on as a, uh, well, as a liquid, I guess, is the best way to say it, um, but it re, what it does is it re-emulsifies the, the tar or the oil in the asphalt. Basically, you know, the way he describes it, now it's like putting conditioner on your, your dry hands, you know. I, I, over years, and you'll see it, you look down at the asphalt, the UV breaks down the oils, that's why it starts shrinking, that's why it starts cracking. And it's a much cheaper alternative to, of course, milling and overlaying. It's about the same price, maybe a couple cents more than doing an armor coat, or what you guys, you know, might see is, uh, chip and seal. The, I've got a lot of experience with chip and seal. You know, a lot of counties use it, it, it's a proven concept, it's a little bit cheaper than this by like three cents, uh, square foot. But in city applications where there's curb and gutter, the chip and seal, you start building up your edge. And, and over the years, it starts making maintenance of your curb and gutter tough, you know, and keeping your, your, it'll collect leaves and water, and, and then you, you just get different issues with that down the road. So anyway, this guy brought this proposal, he's gone around a bunch of municipalities in the area, and, and is trying to, uh, get this product out there. We had eighty, I think eighty thousand dollars budgeted for some street, some street repairs this year. And, you know, we, what we picked was from twenty-first street to twenty-seventh of Bertha, if you look at it, this has, is a decent road, but it's starting to get some cracking in it. And then the road that goes down to Stans Lake, in Stans Lake, uh, parking lot. So you also see this product quite a bit on, they, they used to apply it on big commercial parking lots, churches and stuff like that. And just trying to grow some legs to it, you know, no way to sugarcoat it, I mean, kinda being guinea pigs a little bit. Um, they've done this in Peru, I didn't go physically look at it, but they did it, um, if you're ever in Peru and you drive up past the gas station there. I guess he said he applied it there, but we did kind of a, a test coat there to see, I mean, a lot of products you apply, I mean, anyone that's ever applied it in their parking lot, you know, it, it wears off and, and it's usually just a, a top coat. This stuff actually permeates down into the, the asphalt a little bit, like I say, re-emulsifies it, and was approved by the board in January, uh, December, January, and we got to look in and then, and realized that we didn't ever, we talked about it, and then we got it on the agenda for council, and we were talking to the contractor about, you know, our signed contract and stuff, and they're like, I don't believe you. Did that anyway, started, started looking, realized we didn't ever ring it to council, so.
Did you say you signed the contract?
No, no, we started looking for assigned contracts, I thought, we got this approved, well, we got it approved by the board, we never took it to council. Cause we were, met the contractor to start, put a schedule together to do the work, and they're like, well, we gotta pump the brakes, we gotta take this to council. So that's, that's why it's here now, uh, of course, the work doesn't have to occur if you guys don't approve it, but it is budgeted, it has been, uh, recommended by the board. I, I've talked to engineer, we talked to Olson's, we've talked to, I've talked to some other street engineers about the product, and they had nothing, they couldn't prove anything bad about it, you know, why aren't you using it on county roads? Well, number one, you're not adding a wear surface, um, you know, like you are with a, with an armor coat. But with a wear surface in city application, you get that buildup, so, uh, just, you know, sometimes you don't learn from these things, you don't, don't try it. You know, if this ends up being successful, that, you know, we might go stretch the street dollar and, and then kind of a, I wouldn't come to you guys and sell it as a beautification pr- product, but a consequence of doing the product is it makes your pavement black, and I mean, everyone likes a nice, new-looking black street. And that's why we thought in front of city hall plus the street needs it, it's had some maintenance in the past, but it's, it's due. And then the Stans Lake down there, you know, uh, if it doesn't perform to what, kinda what we're hoping and, and been sold on in the research, it, it does beautify Stans Lake and, uh, any asphalt parking lot that I've ever been responsible for, you know, whatever, three to five years to put on the product and how it's applied, you really should be applying something anyways to get the life out of it, so that's what we split. See how it wears on a street, and see how it wears on a, the street down to the Stans Lake and then the parking lot down there.
You guys remember we had the street study, which showed like eight million in, in, in work to do, overlay work. That's all just maintenance, um, components, so grind it out, replace, we did, constructors did that first project for us. Uh, when Olson did that, we initially reached out to him and said, how, how could we extend or this eight million, like, rather than go on a street that's got maybe five years left on it, can we extend that five years to ten years, uh, with some dollars, rather than going through grinding it all out and spending all the extra dollars? And that's when we looked at some options, uh, there was some pressure, pressure tarring or pressure sealing, some other components that, that were happening in Lincoln and Omaha, that didn't seem like they functioned that well, and wasn't the best dollars when it came down to it, and what Olson kinda gave us. And then this came through and we betted with them, they said, I think it might be an option for us to catch something before the pavement really cracks and feels the crap on us and extend the life, and then we can focus on those asphalt streets for the grinding and replacements, uh, that are, that are really bad.
How does it handle the snow? The sand or salt that you put on for snow removal, does it handle that well?
What I was proposing, by getting that on it, what you're talking about, it seals it from being salt and sand. From, when you put them products on, that's what sucks the oil out for the most part, especially the salt.
That's what tears up your blacktop. This seals it so it can't penetrate it, and that's how it presume, or preserves the blacktop longer. It's because it doesn't allow it to suck the oils out, it keeps the oil inside. And also when it comes to the snow, I think that's the one that, whether it be in black or, it generates more heat, you usually have less ice on it. Cause wave is.
And it, it is true, I mean.
Full rain anyway.
You'll get quicker ice smell on a darker street than an older street, if you just.
It does work, the rest, you know, but.
So you, you said it's, uh, just starting to be laid out.
Yeah, it's been, I mean.
It's kinda getting big.
Hundreds of thousands of square feet have been applied on airports, and for whatever reason, it was an airport thing. I, that's where it was, you, you can't, there's not a whole lot of research data that you can go out there and Google this stuff, you know. So that's what we talked to some, you know, handful of different engineers, and you can't even really call up another municipality and say, hey, how's this stuff work? And so I say, we're kind of a, a guinea pig, and that's why this guy's been having trouble getting, uh, his feet off the ground. I mean, he's got a lot of work doing like Walmart parking lots and church parking lots and good success there, but he's trying to grow the product line into the municipal setting. And, you know, like I say, it'll be either, either be a s- success or not, based off kinda what I've seen out here. Granted, it's a small patch, um, it's held up good the last year, um. It'll be interesting to test it out on a real, I mean, he can't donate. he can't donate that that much product to try out a street. The the proof is in his his airports and and stuff like that, so.
Those last three, five years long?
Yeah.
Is there does the road need to be fixed, or is it just something to try?
Yes, it it needs attention. Like, you can do nothing, of course. Um, if you, when you walk out to your municipal site, and you'll look at the right here, you'll see fissures in it. Um, if you, if you don't, we'll come back and crack fill. The crack fill fixes the crack, which, you know, the cracks where moisture's gonna leak down and make your cracks worse, getting in your subgrade, cause you have great issues. But this is what's gonna prolong the life of the road as a as a whole. We'll still have to go through and crack fill the cracks after, you know, cause crack fill afterwards, this stuff can bleed down and get the edges of any cracks. Then we'll come back and and crack fill. Basically, it's 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 adding a more long, more life to your road that's already beginning to deteriorate. There's different ways you can handle it. You know, this is just one of different engineered solutions, like say, well, armor coat has been the one historically, you know, it's been done here in town. It's done on county roads. County roads, you don't care if you get this much buildup on your county road, because you're just gonna come back and reshoulder it. You can't reshoulder your uh, you know, your city streets. So that that's what was intriguing, and and you got a a lot of people in my position have been around, and they're, they don't wanna try new products and uh, because chip seals are proven uh, a proven product, but.
You say, there's really hasn't been a study, so how long it's lasting or anything like that?
No, not, you know, not as far as in a municipal setting, there's no one to call. That's why we had to talk to the engineers to get their input, and they didn't see, they didn't think it was a bad investment.
I just don't like being a thirty-five thousand dollar, getting big in the last two years and then.
No, and I don't, if I thought that was gonna be the case, I wouldn't even bring it to you guys.
It's got a three-year warranty, I see. I chip and seal, doesn't have a three-year warranty?
Yeah, I don't remember what chip and seal. I think it's usually a year.
Part of your question, where you talked about like, does the street need it? Essentially, your, like, your new asphalt that goes down, year seven to ten, you should be doing some component of ceiling on top of it. We don't have any ceiling besides whatever was chip and sealed across town, so pretty much every blacktop street in this town either needs ground out for our study or some component of ceilings or something that can extend the life of it. Besides what we already just recently.
I mean, you guys, you go by an old shopping mall that has an asphalt street or a a asphalt parking lot, and say it shuts down, and a couple years later, you drive by it, that's because they did no maintenance. But big facilities like that, they're doing some sort of three to five year maintenance plan. So gra- you know, you start letting the grass build up in your cracks. That's, you know, brings dirt to the surface. It's just it it's just a breakdown. It's just a, it's just maintenance, and it's a maintenance uh, proposal.
Probably some streets wouldn't even work on.
Some street, you know, like, are you gonna do this down on industri- on industrial road? No, I mean, that's the application for that, but some of these light traffic, parking lots, um, you know, we're not coming here asking to spend eighty thousand dollars. It's budgeted. We picked a street by City Hall and picked a street at the park. I feel like them are two decent uh, trial areas.
So did you, did you price just the regular, I call it oil? I mean, just wanna come in and resell it instead of this stuff? I mean, if there's a big price difference between them two or?
They they're comparable. I mean, you're you're talking a few, couple cents difference in in price.
I guess you look at your top, like, look at the old parking lot.
I mean, that's a prime example there. I mean, if that had a coating over three years, you wouldn't, they wouldn't be in that situation.
Same way. Well, I think it's a good idea, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we get on the schedule then, three or five years, I gotta do it the way it looks at? Get those put on a schedule, bring out the case schedule for three, five years in?
I think it'd be some, this is part of, you know, a street, a street plan to propose, you know. Just apply this and see how it gets through a winter. That was one of the things, get through the summer, get through a winter. Um, we can, we can evaluate a year from now. Nothing necessarily has to go into the budget uh, this coming year. But like I said, we can use it as a k- ultimately a case study, probably the best ways.
I would say the motion just to do the Stan's Lake parking, they go to alone for now. And see what happens with that one for three to five years and see what goes on there.
I would just say, it's, you're just getting different, you're not gonna get you know, be interesting to see street traffic versus parking lot.
Stan's Lake, it's probably big traffic down that road, as far as I know. I would say do that one first, or do the street first, one of them, and then see how those go for a year or two, and then go for the other two.
Do you guys?
I made a motion to approve. Or made a motion to approve, is there a second for that?
All second.
Okay. Four guineas, one nine.
Mine's a nine. It's not lit up though. My light.
Oh, mine's.
Lightening.
Your light's good?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on good.
Okay, so we are what?
Four two.
One fourteen. Resolution author- authorizing utilization of Ferris Engineering as the owner oper- owner authorized representative for the energy flow with transition project is recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Alright, so there's a drafted resolution kinda depicting out the needs um, and the goals of getting an owner's rep for this project. Essentially, it's come down to all the timing, everything that needs to be done with that. And we're originally gonna submit out an RFQ or bring out an RFQ for a full-blown engineer. There's probably some timeframe in between that with some of those conceptual pieces and some of that, those extra planning and navigating pieces that we can get that done for a little cheaper rate than a than an HDR or eighteen ninety-eight, a bigger entity that's gonna be the groups doing that. Um, likely doing the the design for the whole project, so. We got the complexity component of that. We have the NITZ piece that needs to be done with SPP, getting that done. Um, and then a lot of that remaining technological expertise for design, where that substation's gonna really be. Uh, develop the RFQ, help us through the procurement pieces uh, for engineering. Um, and then help us with project management components throughout the end of the project area. We did have a good meeting with SPP the other day, uh, kinda talked through this and how the steps we need to get. We got a little more clarity from them. They're really kind of defined, you know, we need to get our application into SPP. We need to get the aggregate study started, and there's timelines for all those, and then timelines for deficit tronic or something else happens down the road. What needs to be done uh, congruently to to plan that out, so. The only thing we haven't any to do that, that's familiar with our systems. Um, and Ferris Engineering has became pretty familiar with our systems. They're doing our SCADA project uh, down there. They're do, they did our uh, those are our flash study. And we're the ones to line up for the grid residency grants. Once that finalizes, we have that project that they'll be doing. So they're very in tuned with the projects or art components and how that would tie together and help us out moving forward.
I see this, is that now David Hunter, is he the representative for that?
Dave is a representative of that, but not an engineer for Ferris Engineering. So like this. They'll have multiple team members that have Ferris on it. Um, Mike Wallace is the the main CEO and their their main PE for engineering or for electrical engineering. And then they'll have Dave Hunter involved with that too, municipality standpoint.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You wanna vote on this one, John?
The Ferris Engineering.
I'll, I'll stay. I didn't for any discussions. Sorry for being late.
You're good.
I explained to your situation.
Yeah, I had a water leak, so.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. So we're three and three. Motion goes to the mayor for retiring. Mayor has the option to break a tie vote. Mayor votes in favor. That carries.
One fifteen, discussion in action. Review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit, Julie Baumann.
Alright, good evening. I'm Julie Baumann, CPA here in Falls City. And tonight, we're gonna go through the annual audit for the year ended in September thirty, twenty twenty-four. And we're gonna go through PowerPoint presentation. We'll go through, you can ask questions as we go along on the PowerPoint. You have the auto-report your packet. Look at it over the weekend. And it's a lot of information, a lot of data, a lot of numbers, um, a lot of footnotes. And then at the end, we're gonna go through, we got five things we're gonna talk about for findings. And then we had two other recommendations that we had that were like management recommendations that I'll talk about. Thought when we go through the findings, we'll go through each one at a time, kinda go through all the information, ask questions as we go through on each of those. So glad to be here, and you guys have had a big year, and it's been a busy year. We're glad to get this thing wrapped up and get it all submitted. Um, Anthony, you gonna run the?
Yep.
Alright, okay. Okay, so the report format is definitely the similar format that a lot of you that have been on campus before, that you're used to seeing. So on the report, it really goes into three different categories. So you have basically your financial in the front, of course. So when you read the front of the report, it's the government-wide, so it's citywide for the general governmental operations, and then the enterprise operations. Farther back you read, the more detail you're gonna get, just like anything. So sometimes you read the cover, but then go to the back to see what's really going on. So then our supplemental information is some non-major funds. There's very few non-major funds in the city. The non-major funds, we've really have three non-major funds. When we go to that part, I'll kinda explain what that looks like. And then we do a single audit. So the single audit, we're still in compliance where we have to do an audit and municipalities, government entities spend, not receive, spend seven hundred fifty thousand. So that's changing. It's gonna go to a million, and it's gonna go to a million for next year. Um, so so nine thirty, twenty-five, we'll be looking at a million dollar in threshold. Um, since your fiscal year would have started October of twenty twenty-four. So, but the single audit, the city did receive um, and spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand, so we still have three different sections. So we're gonna go to the next. So on the city, you are all risk-based on an audit. We come in, it's not an audit of a hundred percent of everything that the city encompasses. So a risk-based audit is really the approach um, that we have to do. We look at each fund as government activities as a unit. Then we look at business-type activities. Then we're gonna have all your major funds, and then we'll have supplemental information, and then we have a single audit. So we can have multiple opinions. So if one fund actually materially just did not do, you know, good, that doesn't taint the other funds. So I do like that. This is new. It's been, you know, it's been this way for a few years, but it used to be just singular opinions. Now it's multiple opinions. And so we're pleased to announce, after getting everything finished, finalized, done, cash reconciled, getting the financials adjusted and everything, that we have unmodified opinions. So unmodified opinions on financial statements. So we have modified accrual government, we have full accrual business-type activities. And then our major funds that you see listed, those are, those all received what's called an unmodified opinion. And we're gonna talk about findings when we get to the end. But as far as financials being stated um, correctly, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion. So I'm definitely very pleased about that. Alright. So component units, we audit Main Street. And um, and so Main Street, you know, is definitely a very good component of the city of Falls City. Um, they don't have a lot of assets, so it's, you know, we get all the documents, all the general ledgers, same type of risk-based approach. Payroll's done um, by the local CPA firm here in town. And so, but total assets were twelve thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars uh, at September thirty, twenty twenty-four. So when you see Main Street, there's a footnote about Main Street, talks a little bit about, you know, where you can receive their financials and data. They're in the front of the report. So Main Street is a component unit, the third column in the front of the report. You'll see them on the government-wide on the first few pages. So they did receive an unmodified opinion from Main Street, which is great. So what I like to do, uh, definitely in audits, a lot of analytics, a lot of comparison. What'd you do last year? What are you doing this year? What have you done the last couple of years? What's the trend? Are we trending? Are we staying on task? Are we, you know, where we need to be? So I always present three years for all the city audits that I do and school audits. So our statement of net position, so your statement of net position is your balance sheet. And so when you see government-wide, that's everything. That is, that's a, that's the whole thing. So it's a gonna be some large numbers. This is gonna include all the types of assets that you have. That's gonna be infrastructure, vehicles, buildings, um, you know, streets. Everything from government to enterprise operations. And so you see the city is definitely growing, which is good. We wanna see the assets, you know, we wanna see the assets increase. That's what we have to see. So we have sixty-two, and I'll just kinda round these, we had sixty-two million in twenty twenty-two. We're to seventy-two million twenty twenty-four. And it's just a little bit of drop down from the twenty-three year is what that is. So the biggest thing you have in assets is you have accumulated depreciation. So accumulated depreciation for the city is a very large number. When you think of all the infrastructure, all the vehicles and all the assets, so depreciation expense is more than a couple million dollars citywide. That's gonna be all your general funds, and that's gonna be all your enterprise funds. So to keep up with the building of a balance sheet that you've been doing, or sustaining from seventy-two million to stay at seventy-two million, you're definitely reinvesting. You're reinvesting in your city, just like you were talking about earlier, you know, with streets and everything. So I always look at that, you know, do we have a declining balance sheet on government entities? Are we, are we, are we level? So right now, you're staying very level, and that's stayed ahead of depreciation. So then we look at equity. So in correlation to the top part of our balance sheet, we gotta figure out the bottom part of your balance sheet. So our total equity stayed very level, actually took a bump up, so we were at fifty-two million in twenty twenty-three. Now we're fifty-two million point six. And then liabilities. So if my equity's going up, that must mean I got, I paid all my bills. I paid my debt. I paid my short-term and my long-term liabilities. So we'll see on liabilities, we're at nineteen point seven million, and previous year was twenty point seven million. So that's good. Bond payments on time, bond payments, uh, you know, whether it's short-term, long-term, counts payable, uh, payroll taxes, payroll liabilities. So that's a good thing. When we look at an audit, we wanna make sure EFTPS payments, compliance, as far as making your IRS payments and everything's gonna be done correctly and on time. So liabilities encompasses a lot of things, and the city has taken, and you'll see a big jump. So twenty twenty-two, we're at thirteen point two million, up to twenty, we're at nineteen. So you've got a long-term commitments. There's a lot of long-term commitments in those liabilities. And when you read the footnotes, that's where you really can can grasp, you know, where's all this debt at? You know, in the electric department, is it the sewer department? Um, the one that has no debt right now is the gas department. So so if you think of like, where's all the debt at? You know, it's really heavy on the utility side, um, electric pretty much more, then you've got sewer debt, but no gas debt. Um, so your statement of net position, it's good for one day. And that's it. So these numbers, September thirty, twenty twenty-four, that is that day. So it's a picture in time. It's like a snapshot. That's all you get. And, you know, and so when you're doing audit, it's very balance sheet audits, needs to be correct, as of that day, all trued up. And then you do a sampling of the different risk areas for all the funds, for the testing, for the expenditures and everything like that. So when we issue our opinion, we're opining upon, you know, the cash, the investments, the equity, and then into your liabilities. So just kind of a thought process, you know, when you're looking at, you know, numbers for the city, and you've got this big report, you know, kinda what to grasp and what to really look at. It's still very meaningful. It's still very meaningful. I mean, we're, we're quite a few months past the year-end, but I think, and I present on it every, every, every presentation I do. This isn't special for you guys. Whether it's school board, whether it's any city, you know, I say, you know, you really look at, because I, I'm big in analytics, what was my cash? Where am I at last month? Where am I this month? Where am I at last year? Where am I this year? Whether it's even just my business, people I work for, audit clients, you know, my personal, you know, I just, I just, where is that cash going? Where's it at? So I feel like we're steady. There's a lot of moving parts to the city for where the cash and like the checkbooks are at. But as the board, it's really, you guys are kind of the watchdog of that. You're the watchdog of, you know, you know, where are the finances going to? Where's it going back and forth from? So on our statement of activities, just a few notes at the bottom. So the statement activities, just wanted to highlight a couple items. And so when we look at statement of activities, the way they give them these names, we just can't call them income statement, but it's an income statement. So the income statement is, you know, on the general side, we look at intergovernmental and we look at grants. The city definitely survives off of taxpayer dollars, definitely, grant funding, definitely, and other certain intergovernmental, and then we have charge for services. But we're limited on our charge for services because we're limited on our population, we're limited on the different things that, that can be there. So charge for services and intergovernmental grants stay very similar to the year before. So we were at two million, a little bit over two million on grants, and that can be from state grants, not just federal. Can be federal and state combination, and charge for services can be anything from fines, from, from police ticket fines that we checked, to, you know, there at the swimming pool for pool passes. So that's just a snapshot of what I really wanted you to ascertain off of government-wide set of financials. So on statement of cash position, so on this slide, we're really looking at just the cash position. So we had the nineteen million three hundred thirty thousand for twenty-four, so you'll see it took a pretty big jump, went from twelve to nineteen. Well, the restricted investments on the set of financials, there is no like breakdown. So of like bond reserve, depreciation reserve, capital improvement. Those funds got all, all closed, they all went into cash and investments on the checkbooks. And so that's where the big jump is. And so, you know, we have, definitely on the enterprise funds, the enterprise funds for each, electric, water, sewer, gas, each had these reserve funds. And I left them as restricted on the equity side, but as far as on our investment side, those accounts don't exist. And so we had a management letter comment, talked to Anthony about it, you know, as far as like, they're there, they're not gone, they're there. But the financials just gotta detail them out. We gotta get those back on there. And, and I think that's, you know, a definite easy fix that we're gonna expect, we're gonna wanna see. We want to discuss that a little further with the council, maybe it's like what that is. But our biggest thing is those dollars are still there. And, you know, they were set aside, restricted, so on financials, you have restricted assets at the top, because that's your top of your balance sheet. Then you come down to the bottom and you got your equity. So to basically move those, you can put them into one account, I'm good with that. You can put them into one big checkbook, I'm great with that. But you can't unrestrict them without your votes. And, and it wasn't a matter of, I think, just moving them and not thinking, I think it was just the fact of, we got a new system, we got new account codes, we've got all this, we've now streamlined the bank rec process. And I understand that, and I see that, but I would like to see on the restricted investments, we highlight those again into the financials, and those are tracked. So, so that was one thing I wanted to talk about. Our management letter comment was really just a letter to Anthony, and it had two things in it, and that was, was one thing on, on moving the restricted.
How do you get that moved back then?
Can we set a timeline to make sure that gets done?
I think so. I think like, as far as, like, the two things we had, really, will then flow into the findings. But as far as like timeline on that would be, we just would want that to be like, when you, you know, do your treasury report, you show that. It's like, here's your cash, which is one account, you got a general fund checkbook, and you got your enterprise checkbook. Well, in that enterprise checkbook, it's basically, there would be, say like, three, six, nine, twelve, there'd be twelve, twelve more rows that you would have, where that checkbook all gets filtered out to depreciation reserve, capital investment, and then bond reserve. So all of those, except for gas department, doesn't have that, but there'd be like, close to like, probably like, ten, ten more lines that make up the rest of the checkbook. And, and you just start with day one. You just start with where you were, you know, ten-one at twenty twenty-three, you know, and that was your balance. Because the balance is still there. It's, the cash really stayed constant. You have that there. And we just, you know, we can work together to kinda figure out, okay, yep, this is what we want it to be, this is what it's gotta start looking at. So then when money gets moved, and it's a capital project, or it's a bond reserve, or if it's, you know, the depreciation fund, those really still get, you know, you know, reported upon, it's all transparent, and then you see if those balances are moving number down and why. Because right now, it's just in one big checkbook. You know, you got your enterprise checkbook, and you've got your general fund checkbook. And I like that, and a lot of cities have that. A lot of cities don't have tons and tons and tons of checkbooks. But they'll have it, if it's already been reserved from the beginning, then it has to either be approved to be unreserved, and it just goes into your general fund checkbook, or your enterprise checkbook, or you just go back to where you were with the different, you know, different line items. So that was kind of our suggestion, to bring those line items back. And I think it's a matter, it's like, they're there, they just didn't get it at Tyler Tech, you know, into the system, I think is what that is. Like they're just into just one checkbook, is how that was.
So a lot of them need to be separate accounts or separate funds?
Separate accounts. So don't have to have a separate, because they're actually called like bond reserve, capital improvement, depreciation fund, but they're really just, they were just, basically they were CDs or investments. That's all they were. And they were inside, embedded on the balance sheet, electric, water, sewer, gas. So they're on the utility side. And so, and like bond reserve wouldn't have been in gas, because they had no bonds. So not saying there would be twelve different new line items, but they would just, we'd just go back to where we had our beginning balance at ten-one at twenty-three. And really, if there's, you know, it's all still sitting in cash and investments, it's just the fact now it just has to get put back on the financials.
So what you're saying, there's, there's a bunch more accounts, and they got closed out, all lumped together one?
Yep, right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Exactly. So, and they were all, whether they were savings, investments, CDs, and, and I, and I get that because, you know, we wanted everything to be a little more streamlined process. Anthony had actually asked me, you know, hey, we got all these past, we had tons of, you know, immaterial accounts, and, and I totally understood that, totally understood that. I think the biggest thing that we didn't want to see on the financials is losing track of what was in the bond reserve, and what was in the capital improvement, what was in, you know, these other accounts. And so to me, it's just the enterprise, not the general, and it was those three biggest sections that needed just get added back to the line items. So then when you look at your cash account, you get your treasures report, and you're like, okay, here's my accounts payable, you know, checking account. And out of that, yep, I got bond reserve, I got capital improvement, I got a depreciation fund. And so those numbers, those are reserved, which means, like, if you're gonna do like the street project, or you're gonna do some other, something else, and it was gonna be a bond payment, that money would come out of there, or, you know, it would have a specific, you know, line item to come out of. So that was kinda, you know, when I did this PowerPoint, I thought, well, I better explain this a little bit better, you know, because it really, you know, we addressed it, you know, we didn't have it as a finding, I don't feel it's a finding. Cash was never, cash was just moved. And then the financials, with how everything rolled out with Tyler Tech and the financials, I felt like, you know, it was, it, it just, just didn't get on the financials, you know. It's in there, but it's just one lump number, so.
You know, moved to a pooled cash environment, so it pulled them all together and separates by the fund, but then not associated out of a different account.
Right. So it's got it in the right fund, it just doesn't have it broken down twelve more times. So a little more detail. I think it'd be easy to fix, but I think you wanna go back to day one to do it. And then to say, you know, like, when we get to the end, and we really talk about the other things, as far as like the management responses, and then plan of action and correcting time. I think that's when we absorb everything tonight, figure everything out, and then really look at how we can get everything accomplished before we get to September thirtieth. Because our goal is to have everything, you know, tightened up where we want it, and, you know, everything done before we get to the end of the fiscal year, which I think is totally achievable. I really do. I'm confident. Alright, so that was the explanation why restricted funds went to zero. Then on our governmental fund balance sheets, so when we look at the government-wide, it's very, very larger numbers. You get farther as you go, as further the back, you're getting a lot more detail. So you get into the governmental fund balance sheets, definitely more detail, we have all our major funds listed out. It'll list just the current assets, and this is what's so interesting about government accounting. First two pages, full accrual, then you go to your page, like you get into page five, and you get into these governmental balance sheets. Those are all like modified accrual, so those don't have all the assets. They just basically like a cash-in and cash-out, just like the schools, like cash basis. So there's no capital assets, no infrastructure, you don't worry about depreciation, very easy to read, very easy to decipher. What did the governmental fund do? What did, you know, what did HUD do? What did CDBG do? And so our total assets on the governmental fund is now three million two hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars. And so that would not include, when you think of like, what's the cost of the streets, you know, what's the value of the pool? That's really just your assets, that's like your liquid assets. Alright, and then our governmental revenues and grants. So again, I wanna do our comparative, really see are we holding, you know, with governmental funds. Governmental funds don't have the ability to have a lot of service revenue like you do on your enterprise fund. You're able to generate a lot of profit on your enterprise fund, so you can be ready for a large capital improvement. You get two governmental funds, you know, you've got park, pool, police, library, you've got general government, and you've got all these, you know, funds that are so important to the city, but they're very much reliant on grant funding, state funding, federal funding, you know, other projects and awards. It's, you know, the taxpayer-driven money is definitely a number that's embedded in that revenue number, but it's not the biggest number. And so to be able to, you know, provide all of what city government needs to provide to protect your city, provide for your city. So we're pleased, you know, that grant revenue didn't take a big drop. We were at six point five million in twenty-three, this year it's at six point three million for total revenues. So held pretty steady, which is good.
Your property tax ask is only about seven hundred sixty thousand.
Yep, yeah, you'd be shocked. It's just, it's, it is just shocking, you know, when you think, it's still a big number, I don't wanna run it down, play it, you know, if it's taxes, you know, I'm the last one likes to pay taxes, so, taxes are taxes. But takes a lot more avenues of state funding and other types of, of revenue generation. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the proprietary funds. So proprietary funds are electric, water, gas, and sewer. Those are all your service revenue charge funds, have ability to generate money, and you want them to generate money, because you have, like, just like we're talking about, major capital outweigh that you guys have to be ready for. Alright, so we'll look at that. So our statement of net position is your balance sheet. So we're holding very steady again on the types of assets. So when you think of the city, it's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of big-ticket capital assets. So you know there'd have to be a lot of accumulated depreciation and current depreciation. So when you see a balance sheet that can hold on really steady, I can already tell you without even digging into a number, you had to invest it in your city. You just had to have. So you're keeping your balance sheet very, very much in growth mode. So we're at fifty-eight point one in twenty twenty-three, bumped up to fifty-eight point five in twenty twenty-four. And so short-term debt took a little bump up, so it went from eight ninety-five to a million fifty-one. So this means you're getting farther into your debt schedule, you're making your payments on time. Long-term debt went from sixteen-nine down to fifteen-eight, that's exactly the inverse relationship that we'd wanna see. We'd wanna see short-term going up, long-term going down, you're making your payments. And really, no new, no new bonds was in the year we're doing. Alright. So on the proprietary funds, so on this one, for your income statement, it's just your statement of revenues, expenses, changes in your fund net position and your equity. And so we look at kind of our change from our fourteen to our, I'm sorry, our twenty-three to our twenty-four. One of the biggest things, I think, that really, when you look at that and that number went down, so the railroad had an accounts receivable the year before, twenty twenty-three. And that was a big receivable. It was like a one point?
One point four.
Four, so it was a one point four. So if it was receivable in the year before audit, that means it was revenue in that year. So that is done booked, it's done. And so it was in there, the fourteen point five included the one point four. So you see, we go from eleven-eight, fourteen-five, then we bump down to thirteen-five. Because that's the first thing I thought, wow, we had a drop in revenue. Well, really, that revenue was in the bank, that was cash, it was booked as revenue in electric, I think it was, no, water, water, sorry, it was in water. So fourteen-five, so my thirteen-five is really regular operations, because the one point four that was coming in for the water department was really an unusual circumstance. I mean, it wasn't like we're always gonna get one point four from the railroad. So that's really the explanation why revenue went down. Expenses, you know, expenses stayed pretty steady, we're at twelve million, and then we're at eleven-nine. Those expense numbers do include depreciation expense, that's all operations, so that's cash and non-cash. So your depreciation would be like your non-cash. Alright. So then our statement of revenues and expenses, so this is gonna be your net profit. And like I said, some of these don't have big numbers, some kind of break even, and you have to have utility funds that generate revenue. You have to, because look at what happens with your city. You have all of this major, major infrastructure that you gotta get ready for. And that's why we build, you know, the bond reserve fund, the capital improvement fund, and then the depreciation fund. Because you gotta get ready for, whether it's the match, or going out for bonds, and you have to have other revenues to help, or other reserve funds to help make those payments. So right now, electric was a million eighty-one thousand, water was forty-eight thousand, gas four hundred eight thousand, and sewer right at fifty-seven thousand. And that was very similar, nothing really out of line that we normally see. Water departments usually pretty close. So, so we were pleased with the revenue stream on that, of where those came from, for the net profit. Okay, so the non-major funds, we talked a little bit very onset of, of when I was explaining, you know, the opinions. So non-major funds, we don't have very many of them on the city. We've got the Steel Cemetery, Library Project, and the Unemployment Fund. Very little activity in those. Those are like savings accounts, is kind of what those are for those, for those funds. There's five hundred thirty-nine thousand eight eighty-six, and last year, there was about five hundred thirty-four thousand. So it stayed just very, very similar. They still get an audit opinion, not that they're, just because they're non-major, they're not important, they're, still are important, just a little bit of a different audit approach on those three. Alright. So then on our report on internal controls, so when we have our findings, we have five findings that we're gonna talk about. And so there's various levels of findings. You have management letter comment, we have two things that we just wanted management to know about, like, just, okay, easy fix, you can get those done. Then you have a significant deficiency, or you have a material weakness. So we have material weaknesses, which is what we have on the financials for, or for the audit. So we have five of those, and then we have no significant deficiencies, and then we have compliance findings. And like I said, we'll go through each one of them, we'll have discussion answer when we go through each of those. Alright. And then on our independent auditor report, what we have to opine upon, so we've got controls for internal control, then we'll have other matters, and then we'll have compliance. We don't actually express an opinion. This is kind of what's very confusing about this. We don't express an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls. We still can have findings, but we don't sit there and stamp, yep, did good, didn't do good, did bad, pass, fail. That is, that is not what the audit is, to see that the financial statements, what you have is what's, you know, correct, reported correctly. And so we don't express opinions on if your internal control is effective or not. But we didn't identify deficiencies, and we, we rate those. Is it management letter comment? Is it significant, or is it material? So we did rate it as a material weakness. It just means that something happened that kept happening. Like it just wasn't a one-time isolated, it was just kinda like, we felt like, wow, this is elevated to, just, it was material. Doesn't mean the financials weren't right, depending on what type of finding it is, so we're really- So we're really pleased we could issue a very good opinion on the numbers. We just have things that we want approved upon on the internal control. And then we do test the compliance. We do test the compliance. So compliance can be all kinds of things. We test the sales tax. We test, you know, that they're collecting the police tickets. We test, you know, that they're, you know, if they say they're gonna have auditorium rental, we got, we test that. And, you know, and compliance on just, just so many different things from payroll on. And, and so we had a few findings that dealt with compliance and then we'll go through those. So our single audit is a separate audit. You basically get the financial audit done, really get through that, figure out your single audit, what needs to be tested. We have to test forty percent of all the federal expenditures. So the federal expenditures, they're listed on the schedule of federal awards. We had the airport improvement grant project. It had three different, actually, uh, two different major programs, but three different kind of lineups. Total spent was four hundred eighty-one thousand, three thirty-six. And we had no findings of over those expenditures. We were pleased to announce. So I think, does anybody have any questions just on financials before we jump into, into, we're gonna go through five more things here?
I guess, uh, real quick, the bonds. You give, you know much about bonds? Can you give us a quick explanation of bonds? Are they, are they just loans and that, are they?
Yeah, so, you know, what we see, a lot of governments that we audit from schools, cities. So it just like individuals I work for, you gotta have the leverage if you're gonna grow, if you're gonna sustain. Cause you're not gonna be able to reserve enough cash to be able to do major replacement projects. And when it comes to city government, school governments, you're gonna want bonding to be able to accomplish bigger goals. Is really the biggest thing. Bonds are definitely long-term debt. They can be various levels. They can be, you know, you know, twenty-year, thirty-year, probably longer. They're usually tied to major infrastructure projects. They can be anywhere. We see them, like, we see a lot with city with the enterprise operations. It can be in the governmental funds. You know, it's, it's just a form of, of debt that once the city goes out for bonds. Then you got your bonding agent. So your bonding agent, he's gonna sell those bonds. So as patrons of the city, if you talk to your broker and you get the right, you know, you know, timeframe. And if the city went out for bonds, we all can buy bonds of our own city. And they're all municipal bonds. They're great for your taxes. So, um, but yeah, it's just really, it's just leverage. It's a form of debt. That gets you to where you can sustain a lot of your balance sheet. I mean, when I see schools that don't have bonds or I see cities that don't have any bonds. Then there are, there are some, you know, and, and then the biggest worry I get is, wow, I wonder how much longer they're gonna have with that building. Before they have to really do a replacement or add-on or, you know, with that, you know, with the water lines, the sewer lines and all that. Because a lot of times if bonds are paid off, that means the structure may be old, that you have your infrastructure maybe outdated. And you're not keeping up with, you know, maybe major updates is, is one thing I look at when I just try to first piece together the financials.
Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Alright, so let's look at, we're gonna go through finding one. Sorry, it's, it is very small print and I, uh, I'm gonna read it off of here. So we have a finding. You have to break it down and there's an official format. So that's what this is. So we don't bring this up. This is the format that government accounting standards wants. So you have a criteria, condition, a cause-effect recommendation, and then you have management responses. And sometimes I feel like it's a little, I mean, I like it that it's, you know, it's very detailed out. Sometimes you kind of feel like you repeat a couple of things. So on this first finding, we definitely tagged it as a material weakness. It's on financial reporting. And so on the criteria, so this deals with the treasurer's monthly report. I might summarize a little bit. I think you gotta kind of the weekend to kind of absorb it and look at it. I just, you know, when we were going through on this, as far as trying to actually, you know, we read every minute that you guys have. We go through board of public orgs plus the name. But as far as someone actually producing like a detailed treasurer's report. So you guys can be like, yeah, cash was this last month, cash is this month. We did not see that. So part of the statute, the appointed official treasurer monthly report. Municipal treasurer shall, at the end of each and every month, and such other times as a governing body may be necessary, render an account of a governing body under oath showing the financial status municipality at the date. And the amount of money remaining in each fund and the amount of pay there from, and the balance of money remaining in the treasury. And it just goes on to really kind of list out that statute. I'm not gonna read everything. So the condition for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, the city did not have an adequate control system in place to ensure the financials. The general ledger balances subsidiary ledgers reflected the correct account balances of the city on a monthly or annual basis. During the year, various financial statement accounts such as accumulated depreciation, accounts receivable, allowances, capital assets, under revenues, expenses and fund balance, and accumulated appreciation for the gas and electric department was not on the balance sheet. After a second set of financials was provided to us in February. So a lot of that was, we had this huge conversion, which was very time-consuming, laborious and extensive. And a lot of training that had to go on with Tyler Tech. And so on our cause, that really is like, you know, all of a sudden, like, we've never had this before. What happened? But the cause was definitely stemmed from the start of that. You know, with this initial import from the old software that was moved to the new program. All the revenues and expenses for the year twenty-three rolled into the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, income statements. Therefore, these statements were all overstated. So they were doubled. And so we're doing field work and we're getting trial balances and we're getting financials. And I'm just like, man, I'm just eyeballing, thinking, man, I just think this is something's just very not looking right. And, and, and Anthony knew right away, you know, he's like, you know, hey, this, yeah, I'm gonna run you some new reports. So he ran us new reports that when we, that's, you know, what we got, kind of end of January, first of February for the general funds. End of January for the enterprise funds. So the effect of that and ineffective, you know, financial close process and delay in reconciling general ledger accounts. It's just more difficult for city management to prevent, detect potential fraud or even improper activity. When you don't have the right numbers, you know, that are just your twelve-month numbers in front of you. So we recommend the city continue to reevaluate and reinforce your district control processes. Ensure monthly accounting reconciliations, our review performed timely and accurate financial statements. You know, are, are produced to reduce all risk of fraud or abuse. And then those numbers are just very transparent to the board and that you guys see those numbers is what we really are wanting to see. So does anybody have any questions on our first on reporting?
Has Tyler Tech figured out with this issue now?
So it was the balance import from our manager came in at ten-one. We didn't have a fiscal close on twenty-two, cause we still had adjusting entries to put in. So we brought that in. That came in at ten-one, brought it in and then we brought in all the ten-one. So essentially, the nine-thirty was in the ten-one and our ten-one was for the next year in there. So now you're back at a new start. So there's no imports, there's no anything. You just start back on your, on your new fiscal. So those had to be backed out. Applied out to say this should have been fiscal year in twenty-three.
Has it been an issue in the past or has Tyler Tech just made everything a mess?
I think it's, the old system was its own mess. But Tyler bringing it in, we brought it all in. It just, the timing of how it, how it was. I brought it up when I was doing the imports with it. So I was like, this is really nine-thirty data. And I said, well, we agreed on ten-one and then we'll do a, a closeout process for that, once you have the closing entries. But that, that just never got completed. And I, I have Tyler's support on that. So he's managed to try to deal with it. So I worked it through with Julia, how we could get those adjustments made in the system to then reflect the correct, you know, income expenses.
So it should be better on the next audit.
Right. Definitely. I think, I think what our goal is to see that definitely, the reason we wrote it up is basically that's really, you know, was really a holdup, you know, as far as trying to really figure out like where are we at with the audit. I think the biggest thing is, is it is fixed for this year because there's no roll into. So we're not gonna have twenty-four months into twelve, okay? That's not gonna be an issue. The big issue is you all need to be seeing those numbers and people need to be looking at those numbers. So nobody knew those numbers until we really sat with Anthony. When Anthony saw it, he knew instantly. I mean, it was like, we were sitting right here and he was like, yep, that's, and knew those needed to be changed. And I think it's just a matter of, you get very busy with just city government and you'll see like, okay, yeah, cash is reconciled, things are done. But as far as getting in routine, if you guys actually seeing the numbers of just, you know, on these financials, instead of just wait till the audit. So, and I think that's where we're headed. That's.
It shouldn't make Anthony's job easier, Tyler Tech should then?
You know, um, far as, as far as how the software system runs, Kenny, I am just gonna say, I mean, I'm probably the least familiar about Tyler Tech. I, I'm just gonna say that as far, but as far as the, you know, ins and outs of it, what it can and can't do. It produces financials that, you know, we can draft from or we can adjust to and things like that. But as far as how to run it, I'm probably not that good at that question, but.
The power manager system, they never, they never used the balance, you know, of general ledger was in there. But they never used the reconciliations, um, and the reporting besides the budget reporting that came out of it. Gary did it all by hand on an Excel. He just pulled it all out. And it had three different digital ledgers to try to, try to balance those. New system, it's all, all in that one. It was time consuming anyway.
Alright, any, any questions more on that one?
We wanted to add, we're trying to adjust people's pay them to do this, is what it says in here for our answer to that?
Kind of what there is, look at, yeah, how we can, you know, redelegate components of work. So right now, I serve as administrator, treasurer, clerk. That's all, all assigned to me. So I do all the day-to-day operations and all those other components. Do the reconciliations, pull all that stuff together, help through all that process. The only additional financial work that anybody does is our AP, uh, cut checks and doing that, doing that data entry. So Sandra does our, our payroll piece. She's historically done that, uh, when she was under Gary too. So that, that just kind of remained in place for her handling her, any of those pieces of the, of the financials. But I don't know if anybody else that can do reconciliations and all those components that go along with it. That's just tied to me. There, that's twenty, twenty, forty hours typically on a month to get through, you know, all that stuff. Um, and really pull all, to spend the additional time on top of it, just get the reconciliations done. Getting all the additional reporting, you could sit there and go through it and, and deal with all that. Pieces, get all the entries done, all the standard entries and then get adjusted. I feel like we can put some of those pieces in place. I am the fee accountant, I'll tell you that. I told mayor, not this mayor. Mayor Piddle when I came in, I was like, I'm not Gary Jorn. I'm not a fee accountant. That's not, not my forte. But I could see if I can get it, to get it done and get it where we're at. How are we gonna get through the last two and clean up a lot of stuff when I first came in here to, to get us through the first audit and the, and the second audit?
So Gary, did he do the, did he do all this? Gary did same thing you're doing, right?
Alright, okay, we are gonna go on to finding number two. Okay, so on finding number two, it is considered a material weakness for internal controls, but then also for, um, non-compliance. Okay, so on financial reporting, so on the criteria. So on the statute one dash nine eighteen states the council shall, prior to the allowance of any claim against municipality, examine and audit the same to determine whether it is in proper form, is correctly computed. And is justly and legally due and payable and shall determine the proper fund from the same which is payable. So on this one, condition that we have financial obligations and expenditures. They were not reported to the city council in just a timely manner or in the correct procedure. So during the fiscal year, the claims were paid, were sent out prior to council's review and approval. It is a council responsibility definitely to review that, approve the claims and deem them justifiable and legally due. And also the cash balances of funds were not presented in the council until April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the treasurer's report. And there was no record of a treasurer report showing the cash balances, then that would have stemmed from only utility funds, just the general fund. So we then in turn, the council didn't get to see your budget to actual comparison. And that's really what we, you know, when we do our audit, we're really wanting to see that budget to actuals being compared before claims are getting paid and before there was, you know, bids and everything are going out. So the cause of it was basically just not upholding city code, which was one dash nine eighteen. So the effect of it was the council was able to question the claims. You all looked at the claims. You all gotta see them. You all got to go through them. They were always in your packet. I mean, but you never had the ability to hold them, you know, if you deem them not justifiable or not legally due. So they got paid prior to the meeting. And that was really stemming from, I think, Tyler Tech. I think that was when you transferred everything over, those started going out on a continual basis. And not like a big bulk packet pre-approval with the council, then mailed out after. The council was unaware, you know, current standings with the budget is another thing. Cause we're so budget-driven, you know, with what you have to live and die by your budget. And so we didn't have any financial statements, uh, for the council to review for their budget to actual comparison. So our recommendation, so we recommend that all claims of the city not be mailed and paid before the final approval of the city council. We recommend management present a detailed treasurer's report for all funds in the city, which is gonna be your month compared to your budget to actual. With your revenue budget and your expense budget. And then you'll have that actual today each month. Basically just for the council, for their transparency, for them to look at, you know, peruse through, see all the line items. Basically, your income statements is really what it is, um, that you'll be able to see.
Well, now historically, there's never been a treasurer's report that went beyond the fund, cash balance. You know, income, expenses and your balance and that whole detail. But you're recommended to put that extra, all those extra components.
It's kind of like just your, like, so Tyler Tech's income statements, they're actually very good. They are. And they're gonna have original budget, original budget, final budget, then you're gonna have month-to-date, current, and then year-to-date. I mean, it's got like six columns, which is great. And I think it's just, I think for comfort level of like when you're talking about like different projects, like how much is really left. And you can say, yes, yep, yep, we've got so many, I mean, they'll be able to, yep, here's line item so-and-so, that's where it'll show where it's budgeted for. I think it's just good transparency and just good part of documentation, you know. And then you can, on your budget, and we'll talk about this later, but your budget, you can overspend a line item. But you can't overspend a grand total at the bottom when it comes to expenditures. So, but I think as far as when you're talking about different things, just like tonight, you're talking about, you know, being, you know, if you had enough budget left. Well, there's a big difference between line item and grand total. Grand total definitely is, there could always be a lot left on some funds. But as far as is it really budgeted and that really gets you more into really just true operating budget. You know, really looking at what a true operating budget is. So we've had a couple of our, um, city entities. And we've recommended that where we want them to have their budget and then their actual. And they're really reporting upon like what percent's left or how much are we, are we on target? Cause the whole thing is you're gonna get to these summer months and you're gonna get really close to that fiscal year end. And if you have to amend a budget, you're gonna wanna be for sure a month ahead of that. So when you have enough time to get it published, get the hearing, get it approved, not overspend. So that's where I feel like, you know, it's just, it's a best practice, really. It may go above what you've ever had to do before, but we'll have other entities that that's what they do. School district, like Fall State School, that's the first thing, you know, they'll have superintendent will, he'll report what percent budget is left to spend every meeting. And, and that's just not our school. I see that at a lot of other schools. They're very, very budget-driven. And, and that's just not our school. I see that at a lot of other schools. They're very, very budget-driven, you know, if the general fund has thirty percent left, you know, we're on target, we shouldn't have to amend. They'll have in those conversations about month of June and July. So I, I think it'd be good, I think it would be, I think it'd be good for everybody to see that. And really then grasp what the line items are on the income statements. Tyler Tech does a really good, and they do, if anything to say about what we gotta see out of Tyler Tech, their income statements were great, so.
Yeah, it's easy to pull it out of there. So budget management report, there's some options of what that is that are easy to pull out.
That's something you can bring to us, Anthony, the next council meeting, say, hey, this is the option of what we can work at.
Yeah, that's the reason, some of the reason for putting the treasurer's report down, because that's the piece, if we're gonna have these extras, then we can put that all together, so we have that kind of full.
That'd be perfect. All right, okay, we're gonna go to number three. So on number three is gonna be procurement. So on procurement, so it's a material weakness and material non-compliance, so it's internal control and compliance. So the city of Fall City must follow procurement standards and the purchasing policies and procedures set forth in the employee handbook. So the department heads may authorize purchases that do not exceed two hundred dollars or more, and must be accompanied by a purchase order. A draft policy was implemented, um, by the clerk that the department heads may authorize purchases that do not exceed fifteen hundred and have been identified in the budget. The city administrator must approve all purchases in excess of the fifteen hundred but less than fifteen thousand. So purchases in excess of fifty thousand are gonna require a city council or the governing body approval. Any purchases in excess of fifteen thousand that was not secured by competitive bid and approved during the budget approval process is gonna definitely require approval by the city council. So when we do an audit, we do a test of transaction, and we're gonna pull all kinds of checks. And we're really gonna look at various levels. Doesn't mean it has to be like over a fifteen thousand, we might look at some checks that are, you know, at two hundred dollar range. Um, but this was one of the checks that we, we found and, and just couldn't get it tied back to anything in the minutes. Um, like I said, we read the minutes pretty thoroughly. So for the fiscal year, so the condition is for the fiscal year audited, there was a twenty twenty-two Ford F three fifty Super Duty. It was purchased from Holman's Ford on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that was originally approved for purchase as a twenty twenty-three F three fifty. And the twenty twenty-three F three fifty was never built, and then went back to the council on December fourth, twenty twenty-three for approval as a twenty twenty-four F three fifty. The twenty twenty-four F three fifty then was never purchased. Then on May thirty-first, what we found was the actual asset that got purchased. So the actual asset that got purchased and was signed for was a twenty twenty-two used F three fifty. Uh, but it was never brought back to the council, so that the council could really have, you know, an actual motion, approval to purchase this specific type of, of truck. So the purchase was presented to the council, and the treasurer's report, that really would have been the next month. So the check was cut, it was approved, as far as not, it was, check was cut, it was signed, and then submitted, uh, to the dealership, council approved it after the fact. But it was over, you know, you know, over the fifteen thousand, you know, over, over the, and that was just a draft policy of just that threshold was a fifteen. So when we found that, we really, you know, any big tickets that we start pulling, that's the first thing we're doing. We're looking back at the minutes. Is it there, you know, is it, is it a bid process? Um, and the more we kind of looked into that, and that's a little bit of a tough one, because you actually approved it, different vehicle. And then came back again, and was gonna get a different vehicle, you know, and Holman's had an older vehicle, it was just a fact, just needed to come back one more time. And, you know, so, uh, we left that as a finding. On the cause on that, management just failed to comply with the purchasing procedures set forth in employee handbook. So our employee handbook sets two hundred dollar threshold for department heads. And right now, they kind of operated, uh, city management operated on Tyler Tech's, um, their draft policy, which was way, way more than the two hundred dollars. So the effect administration is just out of compliance with the actual two hundred dollar purchasing policy, procurement standards, that's just set forth in their operating policy. So we just recommend management continue to reevaluate, you gotta reinforce your internal control process, you know, ensuring, you know, if you're gonna have a lot of, I mean, there's, there's never always cut and dried, you know, when you do bid documents. You know, to bring that back, whether it's a third time, fourth time, that the council actually sees to the final, to the final invoice of what can get purchased. And then on the procurement policy, you know, you've got, you know, your original procurement policy, which is a pretty low level to two hundred. You know, our recommendation where we're going through a lot of just kind of getting stuff back on track, getting reorganized with control processes, you know, making sure compliance is gonna be up to standards for this next audit. We probably recommend, you know, that you don't go with a very high threshold for right now. And you really have the council look at a lot of things. So Tyler Tech has their fifteen hundred and the fifteen thousand dollar policy, that was really our recommendation, um, is to implement what Tyler Tech had.
Everything, well, even the system is still built two hundred dollars is the PO threshold. Government's still gonna be the PO within, so it's with your requisition.
Cause that's what we had tabled when we talked about that, until we solve this to know what we wanted.
Yeah, but it's, it's at the end of this, that's requested.
You recommended stay at what, what?
So, so like on Tyler Tech, so you have a two hundred dollar PO threshold. And if you wanted to keep that two hundred dollar threshold, I mean, that's just been forever. That's probably been, you know, gosh.
I'm gonna change three times, they had it at five. And then it changed to fifteen, nine one fifteen to two hundred.
Yep. So if you wanted to have more levels to that, you could. Um, I like the fifteen thousand, I really think that's, you know, I don't think you need to jump to too high of a threshold just yet. I think everyone's gotta get really comfortable with the financials, get, you know, a lot of the processes in place. I think that would be good. All right. Okay, so we're gonna go on to finding number four, if there's no more questions?
So the fifteen thousand, but stay at the two hundred or the fifteen hundred for the?
Um, I think you guys can all, to me, I mean, that's what all the department heads are used to, because they know that it's two hundred dollars for, you know, they have to have a PO with that. And, you know, it's, it's a pretty small threshold, the cities lived with that for quite a few, quite a few years. Um, you know, I, I just feel like your major purchases, I think as far as what operations and department heads feel, I think that might be good questions for them on the two hundred dollar threshold. We feel the fifteen thousand is kind of a good mainstay for right now. To really have more, more brought to the board is really more brought to the council.
We need to probably approve this like that vote of the council.
Oh, definitely, definitely, definitely. Um, yeah, but I feel like fifteen thousand for capital outlay would be a good, a good, you know, stopping point. Instead of going too high just yet, you know, it can always be brought up later, when you really, you know, see more of the numbers.
Price of diesel, we had to be getting close to that two hundred dollar threshold anytime we're feeling up in big payloaders though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we had to get pretty close in price of diesel.
Yeah, we had the, we battled it a lot with, with employees, I need to go get something, and it's easy to go, try to go get lumber for something and be four and bucks, and I'll go, yeah, okay, I gotta go through this whole process, I can't get it right now. So like, well, I'm gonna buy it twice. And it's like, no, you can't do that.
Yep.
Do it, two hundred then?
Yep.
Threshold limit.
Does it make your life easier?
It does, it still goes through, well, well, and I'll talk through it in the purchasing policy when we get there, uh, the controls or something can put in place.
Right. A lot of times, a threshold with threshold, the control behind it is really a key factor. And how much visibility and transparency the council gets to see. So I think that's the comfort level that you gotta provide to you guys. So that you really feel, you know, you're looking through those claim sheets, you know, ahead of time, you know, you know, oh yeah, you know, these department heads would handle that. Yep, this is stuff that you guys have to, you know, have the final approval on if it's, you know, overserved or whatever.
Our PO is now incumbent against the GL. For the power manager, the PO is just a list, it really, didn't really matter, it just was assigned, the PO's number closed out, they just were a running total. Um, and there was no accomplishments on the GL. So now the PO will go through, you can tie it right to that budget line and see where that's at in that approval process. It's right on the dashboard for review.
On this up here, uh, it says the draft policy was updated by the clerk, that department head may authorize purchase on a seat fifteen hundred. Now, was that something I ran through the council or?
No, the only purchasing policy that I've found is what's in the employee handbook, just is the two hundred dollar threshold. There's no policy that actually had defined what goes to see up in, what's, what's requiring multiple bids, what's not requiring multiple bids, what's micro purchase for a small purchase. And that's what I'm proposing to put together.
All right, good questions, good discussions. We're gonna go on to finding four. So on this one, um.
Sorry.
Okay, you're good. There we go, okay. So on this one was, uh, far as reporting on the minutes and the publication dates. So on statutes for the clerks, whether it's city clerks, village clerks, proceedings of the city council, or any kind of village or board trustees. It shall be the duty of each city clerk or village clerk in every city or every village that had a population of not more than one hundred thousand inhabitants. As determined by the most recent federal census or the most recent revised certified count by the US, um, Bureau of Census. And that these have to go in within thirty days after any meeting of the city council. Uh, the publication shall be in legal newspaper, or it can be in general circulation in the city. Shall be set forth in a statement proceeding at the meeting, and shall have also be included the amount of each claim allowed. And the purpose of the claim and the name of the claimant, except that the aggregate amount of all payroll claims may be included as one, like lump item. So very standard, you know, we see, you know, like I said, we read all the minutes of our schools, our cities, municipalities that we audit. Um, and usually there'll either be a listing in the minutes, so we know. Um, we went back this time, because, you know, just living in Fall City, reading the newspaper, had an idea just myself, that I thought, you know, some of these were just getting a little bit behind. So on our condition, so official proceedings of the city council were not published within thirty days after the meeting in the local Fall City Journal. The city council minutes on these dates, November sixth, November twentieth, December fourth, December eighteenth, January second, and January sixteenth. Were not published until, and they were published all in entirety, February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four. Then the claims from eleven one to that February second, twenty twenty-four, eleven one to twenty-three, February second, twenty twenty-four, were not published in the Fall City Journal until that same date, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. So really the cause of that, when you think of that, we're all busy, definitely, but it's really the lack of internal controls. Someone's gonna check to make sure you did your job. And, or you have a certain person that's gonna be doing that, and that next person checks to make sure, or you just get copies of, you know, of the proof of publications. You put them in the file, and somebody's, you know, got a matrix, and yep, done, day, thirty days, or twenty-nine, we got twenty-nine, you know, whatever, we got so many days left. So the effect of that, the city is just basically out of compliance with state reporting that's set forth in statute nineteen dash eleven oh two. Um, is what that is. So our recommendation is, we really recommend, you know, it's a two-part finding, it's material weakness and it's a compliance. But like I said, we check all kinds of compliance, you know, and, and this is definitely one, you know, we check on every city, school that we work for. You know, if they miss a month, you know, is that just, you know, management letter comment, yep, you're good, you know, it didn't happen, just got to pay too many of them. And so elevated to a weakness, and just need to set in a process and a procedure. You gotta implement a policy, and then someone's gotta check it. And so our recommendation, we recommend management continue to reevaluate, reinforce its internal control process, ensure the reports are being publicly submitted and filed in a timely manner in the state statute. All right, there's no questions on that one. We're gonna go to the last finding, we're gonna go to finding number five. So on the budget. So criteria on budgeting, this is material weakness and material non-compliance. City files an annual budget with state and Nebraska auditor's office and the budget for all funds for the city. That encompasses all operating expenses, capital improvements, other capital outlay, debt service, and other expenditures. The government funds are budgeted by fund categories such as your general, public safety, public works, public health, culture, rec, community development, and miscellaneous. The city votes and approves the budget in September at the end of the previous fiscal year. And the state mandates that any amounts exceeding what was published for the budget for each fund expenditure will require an amended budget to be published in the paper. And have a public hearing and official vote by the council to amend and update, uh, for these allowable expenditures. So when reviewing the budget, we didn't review the budget till the very end of the audit, um, which would have been when we were finishing up everything here in the month of May. So utility funds were good. General funds, so we had these that would be out of compliance, general fund was over budget, five hundred fifty-four thousand nine oh seven. The building inspection fund, which is actually listed as public safety other on the official state budget document, was over budgeted sixteen thousand nine fifty. Street fund was over budget, two hundred and forty-nine thousand two dollars. The senior citizen fund was over budget, two thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. And so the cause of that, when we really talked about this, was, you know, we have this conversion, we had financials that were doubled. So no one's really looking at the financials to really see, you know, hey, how far over budget are we? Are we close? Are we getting close? Should we amend? Um, so, you know, what stems from that is just lack of controls, you know, oversight, the lack of controls, you know, of just internal control process. Um, of getting those financials to where they needed to be. So the effect of it, you're out of compliance with state statute reporting requirements. Um, so the amended budget was not prepared, uh, during your fiscal year, is what that was. So our recommendation, we recommend management continue to reevaluate, you gotta reinforce your internal control process, you gotta create procedures. Uh, for detailed financial records, you know, pre your fund, your budget to actual, incorporate that into your budget doc, into your treasurer's report. Um, that's gonna compare that, each fund for a budget to actual. And then that should then ensure you're gonna catch, you know, when you need to possibly, if you would have to amend. So it really gets back to that first kind of finding we talked about, is really just having, you know, you've got this income statement printout that Tyler Tech does, you know, budget to actual. There's other ones, like Anthony said, you could find that are actually do like private net percentages, and where you're at, and, you know, under over variances. And you're all seeing your eyes on that. Everybody on the council can look at that. So definitely our recommendation is, you know, when you get close to, you get close to, you know, like, yeah, these months of May, you know, you've got all summer to spend the rest of your budget. So really looking at where are you at today? Are you over budget? You know, how close are you? What are some other expectations? So you can be ahead of if you have to amend.
So the overall budget was under by seven hundred thousand or so on the general operations, but we need to do it by type.
Right. So on the budget document, so like your general fund, so you'll have those main categories. So you've got, on your governmental funds, you go general, public safety, public works, public health, culture, rec, community development, miscellaneous. And then under that can be all your enterprise funds, or it can be like your board and whatever. Um, but each one of those has to, so you're, you're, you're approving just on general, and general is about a four hundred fifty-six thousand dollar budget. So that right there is just the general fund. And then your street is under your public works, and so that right there is just your street. So each of those are their own funds, you know, to where you have to, you can't be over, or you can't be, you can't be over for each of those funds, you have to be within that budget. So just like electric, water, sewer, gas has its own line on the budget document. So same thing with that, general, street, culture, rec, those categories can't be over budget. So even though the grand total, like you said, it was, you, yeah, because even, then we have this culture rec, and there was miscellaneous. There's this huge amount of funds that goes into that and that, you know, and so, but the ones that tie just to those lines can't.
Some of them are multiple funds within our environment, uh, like the. Some of them are multiple funds within our environment, uh, like the community developments.
So you, so if you over budget on community development, but you under budget on general, you still have to amend, cause general's on its own. Yeah, so there's like five lines on that budget, all five of those lines can't be over budget. And your community development miscellaneous tied with a whole bunch of funds.
Yeah.
You know, yep, yep.
It's a long way past there.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
Would this affect any funding issues for us?
So, um, you know, that I'm not exactly for sure. Um, I feel like, you know, with recommendations, management responses, probably corrective action of like dates you're gonna implement and like, and get these done. We're gonna have another audit, you know, pretty quickly, and these will all be prior audit findings that have to be discussed again. And have to be shown, you know, are they, are they cleared? Are we, you know, implemented the right procedures? Are those procedures working correctly? And so, um, we're hoping it doesn't affect like your federal or your state funding. Federal funds did not get a bad opinion, and this got compliance findings, and it got internal control findings, which affect the financial statements of like governmental funds. So, so we're hoping, you know, with, you know, efficient, quick action, you know, management responses, and more, you know, detail on the internal control process, that, and then really with the council. You know, with the council, then really, you know, being the ones to really like, you know, you'll have meetings where you should, you should be like, okay, this, you know, this is, you know, the recording we need, this is the recording we want, you know, and you'll have a matrix of probably like, okay, did we meet our timeline? Are we, are we gonna be done with whatever we need to have for our, uh, plan of action, so we can meet the September thirty then one? So I think, I think in the end, you know, it's, it's more finding than we've ever had for the city, and it is. And, and a lot of things that we have to check, um, we had a year that was definitely, you know, a transition year, trying to get through all this Tyler Tech. Um, if you wouldn't have had that, there have been a lot of these other issues, I think. We wouldn't have had the financial statements, you know, that got rolled in to the other year. There's things like that, I think this is gonna be a really good process for the board, cause I sit here every year and I tell the board how you're the watchdog. Well, the watchdog means you're watching it. That means you're really watching it, and you're watching the cash, and you're watching the budget to actual. And you've always checked the claims, and you guys always have, you've always checked the claims. And you do a lot of questioning, which is great. We rely so much on our councils when we do the audit, that we have to make sure you have the right numbers in front of you. You can make the right decisions, and, and you have the knowledge and the ability to do that. And, and I'm very confident, very confident Anthony's gonna bring that. And, and I think part of it, you know, just like knowing what reports to do, what to look at, you know, what's gonna suffice to really, you know, get you guys to where everybody's very transparent on what's the city operations. And that's our goal, our, we have a huge goal on that, we've got good city staff, and we wanna commend, you know, all the workers that helped us. I mean, it was, you know, it was a long audit, and it was a very thorough audit, and, and a lot of extra work. That when your risk levels get higher, that means your testing gets a lot more intense. Um, Anthony did a very good job on getting us documents, we got busy with tax season, we didn't get the reports till February. A lot of things just snowballed, and then it was, you know, then it was not an audit that you never wanna rush out anyway. And it just took a lot of time, a lot of time to dig into things.
Are we like financially stable enough to take home more bonds right now?
Um, that's a great question, Kenny, I love that question. Um, to really assess that. So I think on bonding, you're committing the city patrons, taxpayers, you know, future council members, still a lot of years ahead of you. You know, I probably wouldn't be here, you know, I mean, it's gonna be, so it's not an easy question to answer, and it's a question I wanna really dig into. Well, what is it? You know, what's the sustainability of it? You know, is it going to be something that's, you know, economically payable? You know, are you still paying a bond, now a new bond, you know, that's what I'd wanna look at, I'd wanna really look at. And I'd wanna look at a cash flow statement, is what I would wanna do, uh, to really see where that's at. So I think it's definitely a question I could answer, but I can't probably, I mean, it'd take a lot of detail to, to get it to that.
But you could do it.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, definitely, I definitely could, so.
Alright, would you be willing to do like a budgeting lesson for all of us to just, to know what we need to know in more detail?
I think, I, that'd be great, I would, I would like to see, like we see with, we have two other schools. We have one other city that do a lot of budget workshops, and the budget workshops is really, so you all are in tune to what's in those numbers. And the budgeting process is probably like what we all hate to do anyway in our own personal lives, is cause it's just, you know, who wants to do budgets? No one. Um, but I think to have a good workshop, a workshop's not let's just learn, let's really dig into what, what are we spending? What are the line items tell us? Is it operating? Is it fixed? Do we have to have it? Can we afford it? And if you don't have that before you actually start your next fiscal year, then it's really hard for you guys to all sit up here and wonder, you know, well, should we spend it, should we not spend it? And I think the workshops should be very detailed, and I think you need them like, you know, sectioned out, you know, are the utility funds more important than the general funds? No, i- it's, it's just, it's, it's just, you know, what did we do last year, and what should we, you know, let's just do what we did last year, it's way more than that. And, and I think that is something we've helped clients with, it's something that, once you start it, you can just roll with it, you just do it. And you guys will, you know, but it's something I'd like the board members to be part of. Um, to really, you know, is that every board member, is, or board members on certain funds, not all, you know, is it everybody all together? I think that's up for you guys all to really think about and talk about. But the budget process should be a pretty big process for schools and cities, it's, it's just, it takes a lot. Good question, um, yeah, I think it's just something when you guys really figure out your corrective action plan, your data implementation. Um, with this last finding, and then we had the, we had in our management letter comment, it was really about just the budget line items. Need to be more of a real true operating budget, you know, um, and then it's, you know, it just means more to you guys when you're looking at the printouts. So if you have fifty items on an income statement, and you've only seen like fifteen or twenty line items budgeted for, it's not wrong. It's not against compliance if you haven't already spent your budget, but it's just first thing I look at, I'm like, wow, is this really an operating budget? I mean, it's a budget, you know, and you've got totals, and you've got all these other expenses. So it doesn't mean they weren't budgeted for, it's just the fact, or they weren't allowable, but were they really budgeted for? And that's where you just get into the, you just get into the middle grade, you just get into the line items of the budget. So, so that's definitely something, even if I just drew up an outline and just, you know, what's the purpose of it? What are you gonna take away from it? Why are you doing it? And why are we looking at this? I think that's a good internal control, uh, just start before you even get your new year started.
Is there deadline set, you like when you need stuff to, you buy to get the audit done on time?
So when we start out, when we start on cities, so we'll start basically, first thing we do as far as like confirmations, we do those back and about, September, October. Super easy, we don't ask for financials till after November seventh. And then we have four other cities we do, just like clockwork, everyone knows kinda their, their week, they get a meeting. And then we have two we issue for December, I shouldn't say that, we have three we issue for December, and we have two we always issue for January, and that's usually Fall City. Um, we don't like to issue any in February, last year, we issued Fall City in March, and it's, that was part of me. And I said this year I wasn't gonna work on the city of Fall City in the month of March, or I wasn't gonna work on it in the month of February and March, cause of tax season. So, you know, our deadline was a kind of a hard deadline, like we needed to have, like we did bill work in December, which is usually right on target, right on core. And then we should have had everything where we felt like, hey, we can wrap this up, get it ready, even if it's not the first meeting in January, it's gonna be the last meeting in January. And there's a lot of obstacles, a lot of obstacles, and didn't wanna rush it out for, even in the month of February, just wanted to take more time. So, so deadline, so Frank, do you have to hear? Yeah, so deadline. So really, we like to have financials before we get, you know, to the end of Thanksgiving. Because we wanna be here that first week of December, we've got the rest of December to kinda get everything finished up. Not saying we can issue the first of January, but we always have it wrapped up by the end of January.
So did you have that this year on time?
We have reports.
All of them you needed?
Uh, no, um.
Was there a reason why you didn't have those?
What's that?
Is there a reason you didn't have those, Anthony, you know, watch it now?
Well, I think I'm part of that, I'll answer part of that. So we, we got the conference out in good shape. Um, we did a lot more testing even for that first week of December. Um, and a lot of testing you can do without looking at profit loss, and you can have, we had general letters, trial balances, we had the actual listed, all the like year-to-date claims. Those reports, solder dates, every payroll thing you can imagine, um, tons of payroll, all that are on office before, probably before Thanksgiving. And then financial wise, we're doing the audit, and I'm sure it was in December, and realize, you know, the actual income statements, there's just, there's no way they're right. There's, it's not possible. And, and so after that, that's when we got new income statements, but it was already like January, like in the twentieth. And then governmental funds, we got February third, and I just wasn't gonna do it. So, so we had a lot of documents, and it's a big process. And I think the big thing is nobody looked at the numbers. You know, and, you know, and that's part of the problem with when you convert to a new program, and you've got ten million things going on with the city, and, you know, it's just, it just snowballed into, into reports that we couldn't use. And those had to get unwound and just do back to like correct twelve months. Anthony, I think we're probably pretty hard to get into us January and February, I was just like, I'm not doing it, sorry. I'm just gonna wait, and, visit us, it took a couple of weeks even after, you know, tax season got over, just to get the entries done, get the findings written, you know, really just sum up the rest of the audit. And all the testing, I mean, we had, I mean, there was police officers giving us reports, and the auditorium, and swimming pool, and all the testing we do for all the other funds, for park, and all the utility, you know, we didn't have any, there's no obstacles in that, really. It was a very, very, you know, streamlined audit, and I think it was just more, you know, could we have finished it? But I wouldn't have had enough hours in tax season to get it done, to get it done right, so. So kind of a combination, so. Alright, well, if you guys ever have other questions, you know, just give me a call, I appreciate coming tonight. So our finish up is we submit the audit to the state, I've already talked to him a couple of times, you know, just to give him a heads up. And, um, we'll have a single audit, uh, electronic document that I'll submit to Anthony, we email that, and it gets sent to the feds. And we'll wrap this up.
Julie, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just curious on this, uh, with these findings and that, and you go back to the violations and that, some of it means, you know, CP and vacant. Will the state come back on us on that, or how, or does that just not exist, or the mayor makes decisions on that? It's been brought up to me already today from people saying so, I just, I've gotta ask, do I?
Um, I'm not for sure, I'm not for sure, I know I will make a personal phone call to the state and just go through everything with them, and see maybe what they expect. Um, you know, from our side, if there's more I need to do. Um, they know, I've been working on this, and, you know, they know we had some, you know, issues. And I just wanna make sure, you know, that when we do our follow-up findings, that that's good for them with the corrective action plan. So there's nothing that the state, you know, is worrying about, I don't want them to worry that we're not taking corrective action, I think that's the biggest thing. On your question, I don't know, I really don't know, I think that's more of what you guys decide on, on what that is. On how, there's a lot in those statutes, there's a lot how they read, um, yep, on what your next step is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys, I appreciate it, I hope you'll be talking later, so I appreciate all your time tonight. It was a long presentation, but I do appreciate it. Oh, oh, thank you.
Something, it's not good.
Old business, discussion in action. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one hundred authorizing with lightening for the insurance of combined utility revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty million for the purpose of paying the cost of improvement to the electrical system.
Alright, I'll do the reading, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one hundred, and ordinance authorizing and providing issuance of combined utilities, revenue bond series two thousand twenty-five of the city of Fall City, Nebraska, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million dollars for the purpose of paying for the cost of improvements to the electric system of the city, funding a debt service reserve fund, and paying cost of issuance. Directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and details of said bonds, and authorizing the officers of the city to set certain terms and details of said bonds. Pledging and hypothecating the revenue and earnings of the sewer, water, gas, and electric systems owned by the city for the payment of said bonds and interest thereon, establishing the terms upon which, excuse me, additional bonds of equal lien upon revenues may be issued. Entering into a contract on behalf of the city with the owners of said bonds, selling the bonds and authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Motion to approve. Is this, we have another meeting in this, or no?
They'll have a third, uh, reading of the.
I'll say it, motion. Thinking maybe we'll have Julie figure out if we can afford to do that, you know, before we have another reading of these bonds. I mean, you know, we can't afford to do it, or we want to do it, it's not financially stable enough to do that. If she said she could, I recommend we do that. Be safe.
Well, I mean, this would be based on utility revenue, not the actual.
I know, I'm just saying, but.
I know, but just if we can.
I'll figure it, Paul, one thing, maybe we need to, ever research it.
But, I just wanna say, one big thing, we don't do this, that fifteen million dollar grant from the state is darn.
But if we do, then we can't afford it, then we're gone.
No, well, I mean, it's based on, it's based on utility revenue, well, I'm just saying, I, and I'm, I'm not discounting, I'm just trying to explain, it's based on utility revenue. So our utility rates have to be set in order to pay for these, these aren't just like general fund. You know what I'm saying, just on a general tax or what the federal gives us, this is gonna be based on our utility rates. So, and that's, that's what a, that's what one of these revenue bonds are, so, so they have to be paid for, therefore by our utility rates.
So it's a little.
So, I mean, it, it's.
They go up a lot.
Nah, I mean, no, I, I, I.
See, they're the net profit of a million dollars.
We can say no to this and let the fifteen million dollars go, but that's our once in a lifetime.
Yeah, but it, it's, uh, the fifteen million don't have, it don't have to be done right this second, does it? I mean, that's why, we, we, that's why we did that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, but what I'm stating is that, it ain't, we don't have a timeline to do any of this stuff.
Yeah, we had a deadline on that, on, we had to have that, we had to have, had to have this plan in place to even write this ordinance.
There's timelines for tranches.
Yeah, we, uh, that, yeah, we, yeah, the fifteen million dollars was, was approved by DED over two years ago. We have a timeline to get our plan into place, and so we bonded this out, so we can attach other improvements to it besides fifteen million dollars that we're getting to the state.
Hold that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Brad was here for two weeks ago, when we said we had to come.
The bundle, so what, what I'm saying is that, the fifteen million dollars, so we have to do something with that right away?
Yeah, or we just.
Cause I thought.
You know, we have to give reliable power.
If you're gonna wait two years to do this, hell, I'm gonna take the money from us. No, I'm not saying two years, but I'm saying, I'm saying two weeks from here, is what I'm saying, two weeks.
We're gonna have to read it again in two weeks, right?
Yeah, in two weeks, you have two, but, but I'm saying, if we can, can this thing in two weeks, that fifteen million, we're gonna lose it. And our second, our second prime, our second line coming in this house, the town to get us off of a pier, right now that we're on, you know what I'm saying, we're at the end of the line. In order for us to get evergreen, we don't secure this, if we don't secure this bond, and you guys can vote how you want, but if we don't secure this bond, that fifteen million is gone. It's in Fall City, and literally, once in a lifetime thing, there's not another city in this town or in the state that. There's not another city in this town or in the state that had fifteen million dollars earmarked for us.
The issue that people are coming to me about is if we bond for twenty million, where are we gonna get the extra money to help our infrastructure in town to dispute it through the community? So, that's where I'm wanting to see how much we can afford, maybe we need to look into more. I, I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not discounting. I'm just like, I'm just really nervous, guys. If we lose this fifteen million, I mean, over, we don't wanna pay any more utilities, that's fine, but then I want everybody to never complain about utilities again. You know what I'm saying? About not having enough power. You know, or, or a second line. I mean, I'm just saying that.
This is just a second. What about when you can't get lights because our lines break down or generators don't work?
That's what part of this, that's what part of this bond is.
It's for the transmission line.
No, if there's some infrastructure built into this.
How much you build into it?
We were, we've had this discussion before, and that's what Brad was there two weeks ago about.
He didn't, I didn't say anything about what we build in for our power lines and our power plant. That wasn't in there. That wasn't in there, no.
No, we have a plan in place though.
I'm asking, what is that amount? If we have a plan in place, you should know that amount since you know this. What's your amount?
Well, apparently, apparently, apparently it's for twenty million dollars and fifteen million.
That's for transmission. Sure?
I can, I can explain a little, this a little further. So, alright, so we have the fifteen million dollar grant, but we have milestones to meet with that. We have an estimated transmission project that's a concept of thirty to forty million, so that's the balance. And we're still leaving the high end on the table, so we're, we're asking for a twenty million dollar bond that would match the fifteen million dollar grant, I think. So, to meet that milestone, we need to show we have that set in place. We do not have that in the bank. We have to have that as a letter component, and this ordinance is what sets that. So, this will give us the, the platform to give the DED to say, we've met milestone one, please cut us our fifteen million dollar check. We put that in the bank, set it aside in the reserve fund for the transmission line project. It starts earning interest, and then as we're getting through the design concept, get the engineering, get all them on, that's when you'll start actually incurring some additional costs, and that's when you plan your tranches. So, the idea is your tranches are staying under that, that year threshold of, of ten million or less um, over that span of whatever it is. So, we have three tranches of, I think it was seven point three million. I can't remember off the top of my head. To do those, they're scheduled to be in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Now, you could move, depending on the cost of it, you can move that first one up to ten million and then do five million on the next. But it, it does not go to, it goes to the transmission line, it goes potentially to the power plant, ties into our distribution system and potentially to thirteen eight, but it does not give us dollars to go down Lane Street, you know, and do an improvement down, down that side. So, that's, that's additional funds that need to be put in place. When it comes to the revenue bonds, that's what the bonding industry is looking at when they're putting it together. So, looking, gotta have the revenue to, to pay the debt service. The idea for the power plant, the capacity sales, is that, that revenue comes in so we can put that back in the plant, use that, those, those dollars for our other works that were happening that we need to get done, or other improvements, so we can plan those out. We don't have a dollar for those, and we need to figure out what that is, what phase two, three, four, five for electric is and where that's at. Phase two was identified by Trevor being that wood frame down there that needs to go. And we chased dollars to get it done, so we didn't need to spend seven hundred fifty to eight hundred fifty thousand dollars of our net profit so we can set that in the bank, earn some interest on it, and use that for future debt service. So, there still needs to be a plan, overall operations, electric operations plan put together and a capital plan to figure out like where, what do we need to do? Some of this, some of this is maintenance work, you know, it needs to be done. That's gonna probably be capitalized um, in the long run. Might be so few poles here and there, few things switched out, but we really need to, we also need to bring in the design engineer to look at how that's gonna happen. Uh, Trevor and I are gonna go through and say, well, we need a, you know, this here, this here for how this electricity flows through town and how we back feed things and, and operate it. So, those will be pieces we need to, to get done so we can identify those next dollars, and then we can identify where, where are the dollars at? There's not a lot of money out there for gas and electric because their, their business revenue, their enterprise funds, and they generate money. So, typically, there's not much funding out there because they're operated by a private entity and not necessarily all public entities. So, they wanna see it on, on revenues. We have additional kind of tools. We have general obligation that can still handle like our water and our sewer under our general side, which we have very little general obligation of debt service, which will free up the muni bonds, the muni improvement bonds for the electric components. Gas has typically been able to do its projects yearly. We spend three-quarter million a year on improvements within gas. Uh, if we get some grant money that we're chasing down, that's, uh, FISMA, FISMA money. Uh, that'll get us, you know, eight, nine million, and then potentially you have the extra revenue within gas that could be moved with council approval saying, well, we got, you know, gas is making a million bucks or half a million bucks, let's use that dollars and reassociate it somewhere else. So, it's all a, a large plan and concept that needs to be put together, but number one's gonna be identifying what's the dollars that it is and how we prioritize those projects, and then we figure out the funding level of it. Now, yes, rate payers gotta be studied. That is being studied right now. So, with that, we have all of our improvements. We planned for, and the last rate said they planned for three, three-quarter million a year on electric to, of projects just being done out of, out of normal revenue that's coming in. So, that's, that, that, you know, million that we had on, on last year. So, we take that into consideration because that's new. What's also on existing debt, make sure that's covered. And then look in that five and ten year, that's information that we're getting to John. Uh, we take the energy to say, okay, yeah, we need, we need this. We don't know exactly where all of our matched dollars are gonna be for this twenty million. You know, where does that come into play with the rate structure long-term? You know, that's not like we're coming in going, we're just gonna have the rates right now. You're always gonna have a consistent rate increase. We've just got inflation to start with. Uh, we wanna pay our employees total every year. We're gonna have to increase rates. That's just how it functions.
That's how it works.
Do, do less, um, essentially.
The city needs more power coming in. It's that simple. We can't put a decent-sized factory in there, but we'll be a largely. That's what this does partly.
I agree with that. I'm saying we need more electricity, but everybody's worried about bond and this, and then our infrastructure internally is what they're saying. And I agree, we need the tran- transmission line. I, I agree with that. I'm not arguing with that. It's just, uh, trying to pay for it all. And that's why I asked, that's why I think ask Kenny, or Kenny asked Julie to see if it was feasible to do.
Yeah, that's what, if I can get Brad back here, and that's what Brad kinda does for us, uh, goes through those, those pieces. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor by Layden, a second by Ferguson to approve the second reading. Six yeas?
Seven.
Seven yeas.
What's that about you, Josh?
I'm just going.
Already scratched you out of my agenda. Sorry, wiped you back out.
And roll business number two, discussion and action, implementation of purchasing policies and procedures.
Alright, so we tabled this a while back. Uh, we talked about doing this after the audit, which we completed. So, I did bring this back onto the table, which was one of the components within the audit to look at, review. Uh, in the meantime, we had some solicitations that the votes talked about, how we can push those more towards local vendors. So, I made some red lines, and in your packet was the original procurement policies. And then there's red lines on it, which were items that were added in that would try to meet some of those, uh, I guess, requests. So, like I said, the city does not have a formal purchasing policy and procedure besides what's set up in the handbook. So, this really lines out all the steps, the thresholds, what requires purchase orders, what's a micro purchase, what's a small purchase, authorization limits, um, the definition of all the components, good services, what's contracted services, um, how we're doing vendor payments, how we're doing our, our purchasing cards, um, and then the basics on solicitations. How we can set those up, um, and make those function. So, so before you had this two hundred dollar PO. So, you just get a two hundred dollar PO and, and, and make your purchase. Um, I don't know, I think capitalization was five thousand, at least, I think it was over five thousand was typically being, being brought to council uh, based on the capitalization policy. So, what I wrote, uh, or what I drafted up is to define this more kind of the standards. And now, you know, state procures also is you have micro purchases and you have small purchases. Micro purchases are anything under, you know, ten thousand dollars. Uh, small purchases go up from that, that threshold, ten to, to two fifty. There used to be, the small was one fifty, and then there was a large purchase that kind of has went away with, with, in the recent years. So, I aligned it with that, um, and put authorization limits in which match out to the, um, how we set up the Tyler Tech, the department heads can't exceed fifteen hundred. Um, if the expense has been identified in the budgets. And obviously, the department heads are responsible for their purchases. They can designate their, you know, subordinates to handle that or delegate that purchasing authority if they need to, but ultimately, it's their name, it's I do it. Then you have your, your management staff, city clerk, city treasurer, public works director, um, utility superintendent, parks director, police chief, library director, um, can authorize their, any micro purchases or strictly for any funds that they're in, in charge of. So, they can go up to that ten thousand dollar, um, threshold. Um, then we have additional step on top of that. So, you've got your employees at fifteen hundred. You've got some management level, um, in between your mid-level management, um, hitting the, the ten thousand dollar limits. And then it still has to get cleared. Anything over ten thousand will still need to be cleared by city administrator or deputy city administrator uh, for, for all city funds up to fifty thousand. And then the fifty thousand was, no matter what, fifty thousand was coming, coming back to council. No matter what it was. If it's out of budget, not identified in the budget, it needs to come to council either way. But if it's identified through the budget, through that line item detail, um, then it's approved to get processed essentially. But we would need to build that detail out when we do the budget piece, which our system now allows us to do that and really go through and provide the detail. The department head can go in there and say, you know, this is whatever truck, this is this piece of equipment, this small equipment or large equipment, whatever it may be, and we'll have that full solid detail to go against that. Um, purchasing cards, historically, we've just had a, a debit card within the city. Um, and then that had its own kind of checking account. And just, I don't believe it ever really met the conditions of the claims. It was processed at the same time, but still have dollars going out. So, we do have that set up. When we did Tyler Tech, we put in what they call purchasing cards or credit cards that assign through that and hit the GL the right way. So, the ten ninety-nines and everything are lining up with the vendor. So, we have those set up. They follow the same procurement thresholds. And they're sitting up here at the office, but we could potentially, we add in, say that we can issue based upon those threshold limits, add the employees in that would need that, so it's at their department and not up here. Uh, there's additional control that needs to be put in place with that, make sure we're, you know, processing through requisitions still, get, get, all get done. Um, if it was under that small purchase threshold, then they would just do that and turn that receipt in. That's how that would be set up. Um, was, any questions or anything so far?
I think the recommendation I'd do is keep like fifteen thousand goes to council and not fifty. I think, could we change that to that?
We can change whatever we wanna change. That's why it's sitting right here.
And then the, the two hundred go to fifteen hundred?
Oh, yes. Um, yeah, I marked that up from two hundred to fifteen hundred.
And do you recommend that specifically?
You know, I think my biggest recommendation was the fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And I did, I think it's more like department heads, you know, and you guys on the other thresholds.
Yeah, I lined it up at fifteen hundred, just tried to match the threshold limit of the department head.
I mean, I, I know two hundred dollars don't get hardly anything bought. I, that, that number sucks. But sometimes the fifteen hundreds scares me too. I mean, just 'cause, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a PO. Um, it's additional steps, yes, that has to be done rather than department head being able just to go make that purchase. Um, it's not gonna come to that GL without having a PO, so it's gonna just hit the expense when it comes down to it. So.
Make that seven fifty per pound? And so, you like that and say seven fifty, go half of it, I mean, for a PO, and you're seven fifty, use a PO or whatever.
It was, I'm sure, help out, and I'm sure all the department heads will be happy.
I can get you to order any of my three boards. You're looking at two hundred bucks a board. I'm gonna get that.
If, if you, we can fix our issues. I'd feel better with bigger numbers, but for now, I, I feel that we, we need to be a little safe.
We would be, we can just note them in here and then, um, talk through it in our action item.
And fifteen thousand, don't we say that?
Yeah. Alright, so outside of all the authorization limits, that, we talked about actually purchasing procedures uh, for the micro purchase, the small purchase, and then what we would do on, you know, different types of solicitations that we utilize as, as a city. We got, we have, obviously, how we have to deal with the state requirements, we have code requirements. Uh, and then we also tie in federal if we got federal dollars. So, that's a whole nother CFR that you, you gotta review, uh, to come through that. So, I tried to draft these up to accommodate all of that. Um, there is a spot in there where it's like when we get into small purchase, when federal funds are being used, how you go about, uh, make that, that award or that PO that some of them need to know what that is. And that's gonna be set up through our project accounting within the system. So, we have some control for that. Um, essentially, a micro purchase, this is anything that's a small quantity of supply. Anything small quantity, you know, you're still at ten thousand dollar threshold. So, micro purchases don't require getting multiple bids unless you feel like you need to. Uh, so, it's just a little freer, um, buy things local, do wanna buy things local, um, and not have to worry about necessarily the cost. But obviously, you need to be conscious of what the cost is gonna, gonna be. But micro purchase does not require that. Um, small purchases, that's when you get in a little, little more. So, bigger supplies, equipment, some capital improvement projects would fall into that because that threshold's, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, trucks, your equipment. Uh, when you get into federal dollars, depending on how you procure it, you can't do or can't have like a local economic impact preference. Uh, it's deemed, I remember, I wrote it up at the front end of this, can impose or condone any bidding or procurement policies that result exclusionary or anti-competitive bidding. So, that's what the CFR kind of defines. If you're giving a local preference with federal dollars, that's against this, against the code regulations for that, uh, which is referenced in there. But it talks about how we can do that when federal dollars are not being applied under H one. Talk about a local economic impact preference. Uh, when selected vendors, that is not the lowest responsible bidder based upon, uh, the biz. The department head can provide written justification for the selection. Let's say the department head would be that entity or Trevor or myself, uh, citing what the economic benefits are, include any documentation in the file, uh, for compliance. And those are a couple of different ways. So, you have a local vendor preference. That's saying you have a physical business presence within Richardson County. Um, you can be awarded the first of their quotes within ten percent of the lowest quote. Uh, or otherwise, and otherwise still, you gotta be responsive and, and responsive and responsible. Um, so, you know, if they have past projects with this, we know their, their record and things like that. We don't have any concerns. Um, another way is the economic impact evaluation. Vendor can be selected over a little bidder if they demonstrate greater economic impact to the city but not limited employment of local residents, use of local subcontractors or materials, uh, payment of local sales tax or property taxes. So, there's a couple of different ways. And if you go about providing a preference, if we did the solicitation, we'd say, here's your. And if you go about providing a preference, if we did the solicitation, we'd say, here's your requirements. You know, you can just be as simple as that, but it still provides the opportunity for a non-Richson County contractor or whoever we're purchasing from, vendor. To submit and prove that they can get economic. That's measurable of some sort to to judge against. Talks about small in excess of fifty thousand, so we change that to fifteen. Saying anything that's a small purchase in excess of fifteen thousand automatically comes to council. There's some additional requirements when it goes to public construction projects. If it's over thirty thousand, this is a state statute that's sewers, bridges, street work. If it's over thirty and you're doing an assessment on the property to recover those dollars, it's got to go through a whole publication and a lot of different steps. Very rarely are we have that anymore. So it's in there to follow so it doesn't get missed. It's referenced also in our city code.
I got a question. We have a transformer blow up. We got one in in stock. Do you have to do go through this to restart that with over fifteen thousand?
Technically, probably to take it out of our inventory, the department head would need to do a a request through our inventory system. So yes, last night, we blew up a thirty five thousand dollar transformer. It would need to have some process now. There's some steps in here to allow that to happen.
The emergency we talked about.
Yes. So there are steps, but technically, yes. So when we're replacing that transformer, if we want to put that transformer back in inventory, we're going to need to burn, that's not going to be a thirty thousand dollar. Maybe if we can refurb it, new will probably be sixty now. But so there's some steps to do that, but there's additional control pieces that need to happen in that situation. Yeah, we're not going to have council meeting for two weeks, we got to get a transformer up online.
I mean, can we can we format it something like, I mean, if if, for example, if we have one in inventory, just deem that as emergency? Because, you know, one blew up last night and now we don't have any in inventory and like.
Like we stopped it, like we stopped.
Yeah, if it blows up tomorrow, another one, technically, we we had a non-emergency at the time, we needed it, but now we don't have it. I mean, you know what I'm saying, like, I think we need to have at least a transformer of whatever size on stock.
We typically have one of each and a lot of them are multi. Some of that comes down to planning to make sure you don't have oddballs and and different things, that needs to also be be done. But I don't think, I mean, in inventory, if we're going to purchase it, it's it's going to run through, anything in inventory runs through P O in our new system. It has to, it don't matter if it's fifty cents, in inventory has to run a P O other because it just doesn't operate the G L, it's no matter what, it just runs through it. So you'll have, you have that piece that's in there. If we for some reason didn't have that transformer in in the in the inventory, I mean, probably want my department head to still be able to authorize to get that executed. So I would treat them the same, whether it's coming out of our inventory as our store versus, you know, Resco or whoever that may be. Or Auburn or Net City, and we say, hey, you got a transformer up there that's the size that we could buy off you real quick? And that also eliminates the requirement of the extra bid pieces when it's in that emergency state. Ideally, you control those situations, so you don't get yourself in that situation. What you do if it's dollars, the dollars that sit in inventory, yeah.
But I mean, I.
But it's just planning when it comes down to it.
Sean's got a bottle of wax or something sitting on, you know, before he runs, when he runs out, he's got one fold waiting for him, you know?
Yeah, so I don't think we need anything different for if it's an item in inventory versus not in inventory.
I have, I mean, you're going to, it's like emergency, you're going to get a, we need a transform, we got to get it.
Yeah.
They should automatically be authorized. Exactly, always have an explore.
Yes. Well, that'll be part of the electric program is what, well, even utilities, what do we want to hold in stock? They've had kind of basically what is, there's nothing put on paper on what we truly need to hold in inventory. Do the audits every year for us to show us our value of what's there. And we kind of have a basic standard of if we have this type of transformer, make sure we have one. But some of those are, you get pretty crazy expensive, but I mean, you got outlooks of two plus years sometimes on them now. So you got to think about that also, get those things procured. Next item is like doing sealed bids and how you would go about doing that. That's the only one within the system that's a firm fixed price. We ran that with the, for instance, the force main project where we had Johansson's. It was a local and an out of town, that was that was lower. Sealed bids do not provide any components. So that's typically how most of the federal components are put together, is a sealed bid. We would want to, some are required to go that way and some have leverage to to go outside of that if you put certain parameters in place. So sealed bids are just that, they just say, we're going to go out for sealed bids, they're going to submit and we're going with lowest responsible bidder. There's no local preference for anything that goes along with that. But I'll show you as we get going how we can accommodate a local preference. To be able to do a fixed price or, you know, reimbursement or cost reimbursement contract and not be a sealed bid is you need to go into a proposal stage. Like a competitive proposal. Federal funding allows you to do that if you define it beforehand within that solicitation. So you say, I'm like taking sealed bids, I'm putting out a competitive proposal. You put together evaluation factors and who's evaluating that, who's scoring that, and then putting those in place. The the Fed piece will not allow you to say like that ten percent Richson County. That's not going to be able to be an evaluation factor, it's non-competitive for anybody outside of Richson County. But you're going to be able to go through and wait, like I put an example in there is. Go through, you got experience, performance and all that, and then local economic impact, technical approach. And you just put a weight on it, like a cost proposal is part of that weight. So they would submit cost proposal with that unit pricing or an overall fixed price. And you would just put a weight to that out of a hundred percent, say forty percent is based upon cost. Another twenty five percent is based upon the experience and past performance that we, that either they worked with us or references that they would provide. They can put in a technical approach, maybe you can put a percentage on that. And then you can put a local economic impact on that and put a weight on that. So you just put those weights however you want. Ideally, if we have a project and we wanted to go that way, we would need direction on how to do that. We would need to approve the solicitation before it went out. So here's how we're, here's our council wants to bid this this project. But understand that local economic impact is that doesn't necessarily mean you're in Richson County. It's going to say, you know, whether that vendor's employing local workforce, using supply, local suppliers, contributing to the local economy. So that it can't be nondiscriminatory or must be nondiscriminatory and not assert local preference and that's specific. But you can change those weights around them. The main thing you get in our concern would be from a bid standpoint is you want to keep vendors bidding, you know, overall. So you don't want to just toss it out or there is no longer going to bid, then you're not competitive at all when it comes down to it. So how you set that up, I think, is it's got to be strategic when you when you pull that together. The other competitive proposal is kind of like what we're soon going to see for like the transmission project, a request for qualifications. I just show us you can do the work, same thing, you got to put weighting with it. Typically, as we've done federal procurement for an R F Q, they give you a cookie cutter one to kind of work with. And that's how we've always done it, we've adopted that as part of that grant document, a federal procurement purchasing policy that was specific to the grants. In this case, if you have this, it meets a worryable just to get it to the entity. So again, weighted firms' experience, key personnel, technical approach. Capacity availability or familiarity with community needs. That's kind of standard one that they they use. Then we get into kind of the emergency piece. That's where some of these pieces go out the door with their certain limits or threshold. So an event emergency that requires like immediate purchase of supplies or contracted services. I've written it up to fifty thousand to the small purchase limit. Saying that city administrator is empowered to authorize the public works director or the department head to to secure the adequate services at the lowest obtainable price. An emergency is defined any event that interrupts the normal administration of municipal services, jeopardizing life, health, health or convenience of the citizens. Should emergency situation arise, it's not possible or convenient to reach myself for some reason. For any purchases up to fifty thousand can be made by the department in charge and then reported in the following business day. Typically available, so that's not necessarily, probably going to be the case where I'm being capacitated or that can move down to. We could define the deputy city administrator in there if we wanted to, them also. So we'd want to define those thresholds. Kind of just depends on situation you're in. So if we're talking fifteen thousand coming to council, we would have been able to put that transformer in last night, technically. You would have because it was in stock, right? You already had it, you already had it purchased, so it was in our inventory, so we've already been approved to have it in stock. So if you could, you could have put it in.
We had to go to Nebraska.
But you had to go to Nebraska City and buy one from them, then it would be out. But we can leave the emergency limit different than the standard limit, right? Your day-to-day business should be a smaller, but in the case of an emergency, you know, that limit can be higher, in my opinion. I, my plan would be to administrate the inventory just as they would be purchasing outside. Whole city's inventory is a store, it's just a convenience that we have it there. I want a department head, I don't want a department head to be able to go in because it's an inventory, just go install whatever.
Right.
With no control in major, so that's kind of the plan of being able to do that. So if we got a, you know, an improvement project on a on a line or we're placing a dead end pole or some equipment with it and we get up to that. We're definitely going to get over that fifteen hundred dollar limit, they got to plan for those things, do that ahead of time. Oh, we need to do this, let's let's plan those pieces and get them in place, make sure we have the inventory and all that's set up, so. Fifty is probably a good number, there's not too many instances that happens. But occasionally, if you're born in a new line, you can get eight to ten thousand, put wire inside of it. It's mainly electric components that would fall into that scenario. Or a public motor, a chain of storm event of some.
Could both you transform it?
Yeah. So this puts in there these pieces that need to be done to get reported. In this Tyler Tech system, it's going to show that it's, it can't be done essentially. So it's going to have to have an override function to to make that happen, which would be the point of reporting it in next day. Here's all that was done, inventory outs, associate those, put it together, so we have the P O, Julie does her review on that P O. We show why we did not follow our, well, we wouldn't be following our first, why we didn't follow our standard purchasing. And what deemed that circumstance in emergency to be able to handle that. Beyond those, I added in kind of some alternative project delivery methods, which are, they were in there before for the first go-around. Others go to like design builds, construction management at risk. It's just a matter of how the council would want to solicit a project. If you wanted to do a new power generator, you know, the power plant, that's something you can do a C M at risk on. You know, key with power would mean that would come in and say, well, we'll design it, purchase it, put it in, and get it all done as a term fee. Assembly of Nebraska Generator Service did that for us, it was just all together. You go through a solicitation for all that, just like an R F Q, pick the one that you want. And then you typically are negotiating a cost when it comes down to it. That's what those are, just provides us additional tools to utilize if we needed to utilize them or wanted to utilize them in the future. All right.
You did really good.
Any additional questions?
That's more of a bad.
Yes.
We'll make a suggestion, can I make a suggestion? I think the city administrator under emergency should be able to go up to name a number, two hundred fifty thousand or some, you know, a a bigger number. Put picture of self in a situation where a storm comes through. And we're only going to follow policy sometimes except for in a, what do you want me to do in a real emergency? We lose our thirteen eight to forty one sixty billion dollar transformer and I got to get a mobile sub in. You know, or I got to get, you know, some of these things, you know, is it big enough catastrophe, you're going to have time. But that means we have to get a quorum, have a meeting at whatever time of day. I'm just, I'm I'm just throwing this out here to be thinking about, if we're defining emergency, I can need to think of a reasonable worst case. I mean, and I'm just thinking, as we're talking, I'm just thinking like, say, we lost a water pump to town. You know, a water pump can be sixty grand. By the time you have someone coming, emergency, mob in, remove it, install it, I mean, you'd be talking six figures real quick. And under an emergency situation, now there's probably ways we could potentially navigate that until we got a quorum. But, you know, of course, this can be modified later, but I just want to bring that.
We could have emergency catastrophic events, you could make a difference.
And that's what.
I get that, yeah.
You know, you're, he, your city administrators got to be making that economic decision, you know, in the best interest of the city in that situation. You're not going to go out there and do this on. Where I'm looking for.
I totally agree.
You know.
And that's something we look at is we're kept catastrophes, tornadoes.
I mean, I, I don't know how that looks, I mean, that would come up as a red flag and all, technically, i- if it was written as it is, I mean, we even exceeded the.
Oh, right.
You know, and fifty thousand in a storm event is, or an emergency really isn't that big of a number. Especially today's world.
And if you're going to do that, then you don't put a dollar amount to it.
How do you?
You just, you're just going to make that call, you got to, I mean.
Well, you could put catastrophic failure equipment too, you can make it work.
But I mean, I I don't think you actually put a dollar limit on that, you know.
And I would have put, you could put your own amendment in there that if it's a catastrophe, weather-related, mechanical-related, no matter what, I think that. It's going to be in good faith.
That's just, and that's just sort of common sense, I don't think anybody's going to really complain about that if we lose a water pump and we can't get waterfalls in it.
And I don't think so either, but I just, is thorough, is this. I'd like, I, in my opinion, I think it would be good as I reread it, I've read this a few times.
I like it.
So you're better off just to remove the dollar amount off of that.
On a catastrophe, could that?
Add another section that's.
Yes. You guys are going to know what's going on.
You know, weather bit or mechanical event or, you know, anything like that, then we can, that dollar amount doesn't exist to that.
Yeah.
Hey, we didn't have to find the difference in emergency.
And a catastrophe?
And a catastrophe.
Well, you know, sometimes, sometimes that could be a judgment call too, can it?
I don't know, Dana?
I don't know, can it?
It's your, but it's your, as a city administrator's judgment, it's not my judgment, it's, I got to make a phone call over fifty grand and say, hey, dude, we just, this main transformer in town burned up. Better get a quorum put together, so we, you know, I don't know how you define that, but as a, as a head of, as a general manager of the company, you have to make some decisions. And that at least gives you the.
Flexibilities.
Flexibility.
Getting on the phone at two o'clock in the morning because.
We've defined emergencies, any event that interrupts normal administration of municipal services that be jeopardizing life, health or convenience of the citizens.
But you could also just add language in there that says, or the, because you don't, you say everything that the employees can improve up to without your permission. But it doesn't say anything what you can do without council's permission.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
Make sure you put in there, do not call them.
Plus at two o'clock in the morning.
Or quarter to ten.
So you're saying, like move the first one up or the city administrator is empowered to a hundred fifty thousand and then departments under that are fifty?
Yeah, exactly.
As an emergency, which would be. As an emergency, which would be, whether it's catastrophe, I mean, pretty much all of them are.
Yeah, I mean.
A catastrophe or a failure of some component that we would have. Yeah?
I'd rather doubt if you'd abuse the system. I said, I'd rather doubt if you're being abused when it comes to that. No, I would bet the department head would probably call you anyway.
Yeah, most of the time, we're, we're in every aspect of everything. Okay. So under authorization limits, we change fifty to fifteen thousand, should be fifty thousand to fifteen thousand. POs from fifteen hundred to seven fifty. Small purchases from fifty to fifteen thousand, so that's just our capitalization kind of limits. Or what we're referencing is our capitalization, then we'll probably need to revise our capitalization policy, if that's what we wanted to do. Emergencies, hundred fifty K to city admin, fifty for anyone under, if they can't get a hold of me. I interpret that correctly?
I agree.
Makes sense? Okay. Then we would entertain a motion to approve the purchasing policy and procedures as amended.
Is it okay if we just wait to see it all written down on paper, just so there's no typos? You know what I'm saying, and, and.
Yeah, just, we can bring it back.
And, and scrutiny scrutiny. I, I, I just, I, I think it'd be best if we could, so we could have a chance to read it. We don't have to go do this all again, but we'll say.
And we, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, I did have done, go through all of it also, catch all those in the flows and, and ma- and make sure, we did a few little revisions there that were, were depicted. But I can go through, uh, just accept everything, put it all in a finalized document, and then, then bring it back.
I just, I just would hate for something to happen and, then you get a, yell that for all, that's what we said, yeah, let's just.
So motion table until.
Yeah.
That day's made. You feel that?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's been sitting there for a while anyway, right? That's like, but you've done a lot of work to it, I appreciate all the, uh.
Julie said we could.
We just need to get some.
It's a lot of work, that was a lot of work.
Yeah, it is, this has been a lot, we considered you never really have a place. Yeah, because this doesn't tie itself to any budget.
Yeah, so we have motion to the table until, or entertain a motion to the table until June second, for the next regular meeting. All right, seven.